Welcome everybody to the November 29th, 2017 Neshoba Regional School Committee, regular meeting. Calling the meeting to order at 6 o'clock, we made it in right at 6. Citizens comments, do we have any citizens comments? No. I've got two quickie updates for the school committee. One is, I know everybody knows, I just want to state it so that Anne and others can grab this. The budget workshop has been moved to January 20th from the 13th because as the 13th falls right in the middle of the long weekend, and while the school committee was willing to do that, we were concerned that folks from the public who may want to attend wouldn't be able to attend, and I'm sure the principals and other staff members would appreciate that as well. So, the budget workshop will be January 20th. And, I think it's here.
Yeah.
It'll be in the morning, and we'll have more information on an exact time, a start time, it's likely going to take all of the morning. So, we'll get back to you on that. And for the school committee, I don't know if you've looked at it, but I reorganized the school committee tab because there was so much stuff in there, and so many, what do they call, sub tabs. Alita worked on that for me, like turned it around immediately, so thank you very much to Alita. And hopefully, it will help people be able to find the documents that they're looking for much easier, both for the school committee and the community. And I think those are really the only two that I have. We have a student representative report.
Yes, I do. A little bit more exciting than the last one. So, from the athletics department, our football team will be playing in the MIA Division Four State Championship game this Saturday. Neshoba will play Melrose at 11:00 a.m. at Gillette Stadium. And, the pep band is looking forward to performing at Gillette to support the football team as well. Winter sports started this week, and the winter season is now in full swing across the district, including the basketball programs at all of the middle schools. And, we're excited to report that the Neshoba pep rally bonfire was a success with both faculty, families, and alumni from across the district coming to celebrate Neshoba and get ready for the Thanksgiving football game. From the middle school, the Luther Burbank Middle School chorus was invited to sing the National Anthem at the Worcester Railers hockey game on December 22nd. And Florence Sawyer Student Council food drive to benefit meat collected, a truckload of food checking in at nearly a thousand pounds before Thanksgiving break.
That's it?
That's all we have.
That's all you guys?
Yeah. I mean, there'll be more exciting Christmas events in December for all the choirs and fans.
Alright, thank you for that.
Can I just bring on the bonfire events? That was so fun. What a fun event that was. But I think what was really, really special to me was the level of volunteerism and the level of generosity, the donations of time, like whether it was the Lancaster Fire Department, or the food trucks that came out, and the boosters and everything that they did, and all of the wood that was donated. If you didn't see that fire, it was like, I don't know, four floors high. It was huge. But, and the music, and I know our own Mr. Bates, Principal Bates, was our emcee that night, did a great job, had the place just rocking. It was fun. It was just a fun, fun night. So, special thanks to everyone, special thanks to our three communities on that, it was great.
Students very much enjoyed it.
Yeah, we all did, it was fun.
Alright.
You were there as well.
I was, and I dragged my college student there too. So, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Clancy for the stu- for your, for the students? You want to do students?
Yeah, I would say let's do the students. Presentation for it, so let's turn it over to Mr. Bates, Principal Bates.
Turn it over to Mr. Bates.
Hi everyone, thanks very much for having us. I'm going to just tee it up for Mr. Caligiri, the advisor to our Investors Club. Investors Club started actually many years ago as the Stock Market Game. Mr. Caligiri has sort of taken that in the next direction, the next level. We had, I think, some folks' children were participating in the Stock Market Game years ago, either boys or Mr. Canskey. And so, it's an opportunity for kids to learn about finance, markets, economics, and to use some, to invest. And so, I'll turn it over to Mr. Caligiri. We have some of our Investors Club members here tonight, Ryan, and Curtis, and Robert, and Trevor. So, boys, come on up.
Hold it, boys. Right here, guys. Yeah, right here. Thanks, thanks for the op- oh, is that the clicker? Thanks for the opportunity to let us present our enrichment activity to you guys. The Stock Market Club is a lot of fun. These four gentlemen are just representative. We have 20 kids on the team, 10 young men, 10 young ladies, exactly right down the middle gender wise. What, did you hit the middle? Left and right?
Left, yep.
Alright. So, we meet on Monday mornings before school, pre-market. And, it's funny because the platform that we use only allows us to trade, we can't trade pre-market or after the market. And there's a lot of fees associated where it's something that I wasn't used to, because personally, I use the Robinhood one, and no fees, nothing. So, it was a learning curve for me and for the students. And I started by first giving a little mini lesson, and then letting them go to town, you know, doing some research. But then, as kids trickled in, they would miss the lesson. So, now I do the lesson at the end, little 10-minute snippet. Mostly, now that they have their passwords, they get a hundred thousand dollars to invest. The money obviously is not real, but it's traded in real time, real stocks, real research tools that we can use in the platform. We have Chromebooks in the library that the kids can access, and some of them come at lunch too. And we compete amongst ourselves and amongst other schools. So, I think in our region, there are 300, how many, do you remember?
There's like 300 and 33, I think.
300, 33, just in our region. And, we have, I think, nine teams or 10 teams. Men in Black, the team that Trevor's on, was third for three days in a row at one point, beating out the Math and Science Academy, high school teams and all of that, so. But he'll tell you, there's a little bit of luck involved too. Skills, and, we got one more thing here, yeah. And again, it provides, as Mr. Bates pointed out, provides a great learning experience for the kids. But you know what, they work collaboratively too. In the beginning, we choose if you want to be an individual investor, or if you work on a little team. And most of the kids choose to work on a team, so they learn a lot of collaboration skills. But honestly, most importantly, as the librarian, they learn a lot about research too. And, there's so much on the internet, especially when it comes to stocks, of people trying to push you in one direction or another. You have to really vet the information to make sure that it's something that you can use. And then again, there's a little bit of luck too. So, did you guys want to say anything, share anything about what you learned, the stock market?
What are your favorite companies that you're investing in?
I see they want tips.
I'm in that field, so I want to know what you think.
Well, in, um-
What's been your most successful one?
In the Men in Black Corporation, we've been investing in Amazon, Google, Apple, all the high-tech companies, and they've been pretty successful for us. We've, obviously, like Mr. Caligiri pointed out, we've been through a 3D trade. So, they're very successful for us.
They still stay in the top 20, even though there's fluctuations in the market and other teams. A group, a whole bunch of teams joined from one school recently and dropped us down, only because they hadn't invested yet. So, they still had their 5,000, and it was earning interest, you know, before they started. So, they bumped some of our guys down a little bit, but catching up.
I would say that three of the teachers and myself have a team, Mr. Caligiri.
Oh, you had to bring this up.
Well, I think it's important for them to know in terms of context, that the teacher team is at the bottom of the, nearly at the bottom of those 300, so it's largely because I invested in some fairly risky stocks that I've not yet paid off, so.
Don't dump them yet.
I think the batteries did well, though.
So, when you vet stock, what goes into vetting stock and decision-making? Makes you decide to go into certain stocks?
We go to finance a lot.
Yeah.
To help us with the pre-market, and with what we, what this stock did the day before us. So, and we check a bar diagram on, like, the last day, the last five days, month, six months, and more, to see if the stock has been doing well.
I see. So, for the teacher team, what is your vetting process?
It's not as thorough as my vetting process for teachers, I will tell you.
See the dark corner of Mr. Bates's?
No, that's good, so.
So, I just want to thank you, all of you, and the parents and the kids. Financial literacy is like really near and dear to my heart, it is a big deal. And I look at it globally, across generations in my day job. I do, I really do have a job! But what you guys are doing right now is going to set you up so well for the rest of your lives. Just make sure that whatever you can suck out of these guys, you do. And then, share it with your friends. Because this particular generation actually is more aware, the I generation is more aware financial literacy and the need for it than all of the other generations. So, you guys are like truly the future from a financial perspective as well. I think it's exciting. I loved your presentation. Everything you told us was right on, I mean, it was awesome. I want you guys to come back, I want you to tell us how you're doing, I want you to tell us which stocks you tried to take a chance on, and you probably learned something because it didn't work out for you. And then, what I really want to know is, is anybody diversifying their portfolio? Can you, someone talk to me about that, because I bet you know what that means.
Go ahead, somebody who hasn't said anything. Chime in. Curtis, come on.
What?
What are you holding, and is it diverse, or the different sectors?
We accidentally short-sold Amazon instead of buying it. We sold it for like three months.
Yeah, we're starting off with the basics. It's open till, from, for 5th graders to 8th graders. And, I'll tell you, I think 95% are 5th graders. So, and they're all enthusiastic about it.
Awesome.
So, I think, so I've started it off, we started off with, what is a corporation? Was it publicly traded versus, so every time we add just a little bit more, we just started talking about short settling, but just every time, it's just a little bit more about sec- about different sectors and diversifying. Just starting to get into that, you know, we just started a few months ago.
Just started, midnight.
But hopefully, these guys, I know they're going to stick with it throughout middle school too, because they're just so enthusiastic about it, that as we go, we'll start adding those layers, because it is a complex tool to use, you know?
Yeah. That's really cool. Does anybody else have any questions for these pretty impressive young men?
Do you have any regrets on any companies that you've had?
Mostly Intel, sort of, because they're not really, they're, they've been, or, but they were one of the first stocks to buy, and they weren't really doing anything for us. So, it was kind of a recent money for us.
So, at that point, did you sell and then look for something else, or did you? Yeah, you did. So, you did the swing trade. The swing trade.
It's a 1% transaction fee, buying and selling, so you have to calculate that in-
Wow! It is big. It's huge.
That's ridiculous.
And you can only trade at the market close. So, for example, I felt really strong about Wayfair, the online furniture market. I know, I know, I know. And, you know, it's a thought, Jen should have known better since, you know, I was pretty well associated with this program, that, you know, we'd get in at a certain price, and it closed much lower, and we, you know, we've taken a hit ever since on that, trying to get it back. So, we have a, we have a limit order if it ever gets back to that golden amount.
That is so cool. I'm so impressed.
We're waiting for our dividends too. So, we do have some stocks with dividends, a bunch of, we try to talk that up.
Well, that's good for us.
And you have to wait three months, you know, before you see some results on that. So, that's always good. I've got my Johnson &amp; Johnson, that's always the lock. That's my lock for the-
I'm looking at this one.
Yes, yes, I talked it into it.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for that.
Your parents for bringing you tonight, that was amazing.
Thank you. Awesome work! Alright, I wish I could talk to them for like an hour. So cool. Alright, our superintendent's report is next.
Yes, thank you. So, I have about six items that I'm going to just quickly race through. Stowe, I just want to extend a special thank you to the Stow Town Planner, Jesse Sedman, he came in and met with us, met with the team, he met with Michelle Cody, Rob Fries with Pat Maroney and myself, because they've got a major project going on down there. I really appreciate the fact that he came early, and so, you know, this could affect your busing, so let's just kind of watch it, here's when we think we're going to start the project, here's what the timelines that we're working on. It was a really nice exchange, so I'm very, very appreciative to Stowe for coming in and letting us know well in advance. Grant concerns, I'm going to ask Alita if she can put up some of the, we're finding this is kind of starting to become a pattern with some of our grants. And so, I'm just going to, should be there, it is, should be a separate sheet, but it's something that we're continuing to find over and over again. So, if you take a look, what we were, just kind of wanting to point out, something that we have to keep in the back of our mind is, for example, the very top SPED Program Improvement Grant, we've been getting this for years. It's always been about the same amount of money, and so, we've been counting on that every single year. And about, maybe a week ago, maybe Joan, would it be, maybe two weeks ago?
Two weeks.
All of a sudden, just out of nowhere, the money didn't come, and we basically were informed by the DESE, "Yeah, you're not getting it now." And just like that, almost 30,000 didn't come into us. And we're seeing this kind of trend happening, and it's causing us concern, and that was a really stark example. If you take a look at some of the others, like the SPED Early Childhood Grant there, you can see that that's kind of dipping not a lot. And then, there's another smaller grant that basically just dried up. The kindergarten is, that was a big one for us to lose, that we lost that about a year ago. But it's not like you can just make that up in the next year, it's not like you, you know, you can't take a $60,000 hit, and all of a sudden, the next year, gee, it's all better from there on in. You're kind of having to work with that year after year after year, because there's nothing that replaces that. And, then the Title I Grant, if you take a look at that, we're seeing it decrease, you can see that, you know, the anticipated for, for this current year is a 232, down from 317 just two years ago. The Circuit Breaker is another concern we have, and that's one that we've already been told for 2019, we're going to take a major hit. And so, we are already looking ahead to that 2019 year, knowing that we're going to be at least $113,000 out of sync on that grant. And so, I, the only reason I bring this tonight was just, is just to say, know that this is happening to us pretty consistently over time, and you have a situation like we did the other, you know, two weeks ago or whatever it was, where all of a sudden, like, I'm so grateful that we didn't sign a pile of contracts, because that money was all targeted money. And if we signed all those contracts, we would have, we would have had to have gone back into the coffers to find that 30,000. So, Joan, I'm not sure if there's anything that you're thinking that you can add to this conversation, or as I, as I put it out there?
I just think the biggest loss is the professional development that comes with that grant, so it gives us a really opportunity to provide specialized professional development for specialized teachers in the district and to grow our program. So, we've used that money for, you know, Orton-Gillingham training to expand reading, specialized reading instruction. Last year, we did the co-teaching pilot, so we did a lot of work with our middle school special educators and regular educators, and had consultants coming in, and that work continued this year. So, there's really specialized money to really, you know, give teachers tools to give cutting edge instruction to students who may need, you know, differentiated types of strategies, so it's very concerning that that money's not available to us this year.
I think this whole trend is concerning. And so, I want to, you know, last year, we talked about how we were watching the state and federal governments and pulling back, and watching for the pullback on the money. And so, what's disturbing to me is not just that this year, we've got to try to find a shortfall of $113,000, $686,000 in the budget, but for next year, we already know almost that exact amount is coming out of Circuit Breaker.
Right, that's exactly right.
So, and we don't even know what else is going to fall off the table, so you've got to assume the losses in the budget now that we know of, and then prepare to assume additional losses when we're looking at wanting to expand programs, add programs. So, it's going to be really challenging this year, and we really have to be very specific and targeted on the programs that we want to add. This, this trend makes me really nervous.
Well, I think to your point too, you're not using the word maintain, but that's really what we're talking about too, just maintaining those, the PD that we need to, because it's not just a little loss of money, it's a loss of education for our teachers that all of a sudden dries up, because we don't have the money to spend. So, it's really, really frustrating, and I think I just wanted to put it out there well in advance, and just say, just so you know, this is the stuff that we're dealing with right now.
So, can you keep us, one second, can you keep us posted and just keep this-
Adding it, yeah.
Please, just keep us aware.
Is this a trend by everybody, or just us?
This, no, all of this, all of this is being felt right across, like, the state of Massachusetts, it's not just us.
So, is students pulling back on all of these?
Yeah, everyone that's here sitting there. Now, I want to go, I want to go back to the top one though. The top one is the only one, Joan, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I believe the top one is the only one where they're looking at potentially redistributing it in some different ways, but we've been cut out of the mix. The others though, are all basically relative to whatever the budget size is, whatever the needs are, however, whatever the formula is behind it. So, that would, that's what we felt in other districts.
So, is this, have they talked about this? Is this something that's going to continue, or are they just going to keep taking money away from towns?
We have no idea. We honestly have no idea. We just get the word, "You're not getting this," even though, like, that 20, that 27,000 was something, we have always received that. And all of a sudden, we just get a basically email, and in fact, even the email was just, "Yeah, you're not getting it." It was like a one-liner. No rationale, no context to understand why we weren't getting it. And then, there was something else that said, "Well, we'll refer you to this," and that's how we discovered that they were going to try to redistribute that. But it doesn't matter for a district like ours, because that means that the $27,938 that we thought was coming isn't here.
Well, and these are programs that we don't want to impact, but what happens with other grant programs, we're going to have, that may not be dictated by law, we're going to have to make decisions, tough, tough decisions on, do we continue programs? The priority of those programs.
But usually, when they take away, they allow for something, I mean, what are they going to let us do to help supplement this? There's got to be a give and take, they can't just take it away.
Absolutely, they can.
Okay, so they can't, so they're mandating Stockholm, but then-
Absolutely.
So, do they have, but do they have any ideas about like how to help us mitigate
some of this?
We're on our own, everybody's on their own.
So, is there anything that we can't do?
Well, you've got to make up the shortfall in the budget.
Well, and I get that, but I mean, there's so many laws about like what you can do with money, what you can't do with money, and how you can raise the money, how you can not raise the money. Are they giving us any options?
No.
Now.
Neil?
So, just for, I think for clarity's sake, if we could put a face on what these things are, because when, and I think just anybody looks at these, including people on the school committees, unless there's a specific explanation of each one of these particular, I mean, SPED Program Improvement Grant, Early Childhood Grant, Early Childhood Program Improvement Grant, right? So, there's three different things, but they all sound very closely associated. So, where I'm going with this is, when people are looking at this, this gets posted online or whatever, and they're showing, but it means nothing. Those are just numbers. And if there was another column in there that actually gave a very brief, one or two-word description of what that means.
Put it underneath.
Right? So, if that means, like Joan was just talking about, if that means PD, explain that that means PD, that that's the hit that's being taken, because I think it needs to have a face on what's going on. Otherwise, those numbers are just numbers, and it's just a reduction.
And I hear all of that, and I'm on the screen, and I think that we can certainly add, as I said to Lorraine, I think that we see this as a living, breathing document that we're just creating, and we'll just continue to add to it. But, and I agree with you on one level, and so, I support that thinking. But at the end of the day, when it comes to Pat's office or my office, it is about, how do we make up that 113,000? Or whatever number happens to be there. Because even, even though there's a face to it, we still have to figure out where that shortfall comes from, so.
Far.
On the Circuit Breaker, are we, do we operate in arrears on that? Do we get money one fiscal year, and we use it in the next?
Yeah, Pat, maybe you can speak to that just quickly, because you're absolutely right on that. There's a one-year gap here for us.
The way that we budget with Circuit Breaker is that the monies that we receive, say the money that we receive for Circuit Breaker this year, is used as an offset to our revenue source for the following year. So that we don't get caught in-
This kind of, very kind of situation.
So, we'll have an opportunity to budget according to the numbers that we have right now.
We will have a known number at the end of this, during the year or something.
Awesome, thank you. I've also just distributed another sheet, and that's just quickly, an update for the Asimov Valley Collaborative. It just lists some of the highlights. Apparently, as being a member of that collaborative, they asked that we distribute this kind of thing. We're relatively active with the collaborative, I don't think we're overly active with them, but pretty relatively active. We take part in a lot of the PD offerings that are there, of course, we send certain students to certain programs if that works for us, we are in certain Jaba-like groups. So, those are the types of exchanges that we have, and interfacing that we have with the collaborative. So, that's just a quick update. Budget process, the new school year budget process continues to progress well. A reminder that we will provide a very brief overview at our next meeting, and I want to remind you that that's simply for the purpose of a place folder, and it will kind of lend a lens to where we are sitting at effective that night, at that point in time. Remember, it's a snapshot, and we'll probably work down from there, but it's just a snapshot. Pre-K and K, I just want to acknowledge the fact that, so tonight, we're going to start some early discussion on the pre-K. I know that Joan DeAngelis and the principals are going to come forward, as will Sidney Maxfield, and talk about the vision and a proposal that they're going to bring up for the pre-K. Next meeting, we're going to have some discussion around K. So, this is just for the purpose of starting that discussion. Rental discussions, this is something that has been ongoing for the last year. Losing Jeff Converse kind of in the middle of there, we kind of put things on hiatus for a little bit, we're letting Rob kind of get his feet wet, and a little bit more grounded, and then, we'll probably bring this back up around February, March type thing for rental discussions. But the group did a lot of good work, a lot of the air, the work is complete, it's just that in its totality, it's not complete enough to bring forward to you. And, that's it for me, and I'll be at the football game for Saturday morning. Looking forward to Gillette.
Alright. So, Pat, our Business and Operations Manager, has several updates. And I'm going to take this out of order, Pat, if it's okay? If we could do, touch on the FY '17 audit report first, and then we'll get into FY ' '18, FY '19 budgets.
As far as the fiscal year '17 audit report, I spoke with Demer Mueller today, and, you know, find out what the status is. We're waiting for draft, the draft should be within two weeks. And at that point, they like to present in a draft format to the school committee before they print their final document. And as soon as I receive that draft document, I will review that, and make sure that the numbers are in fact what they should be, and then, it will be presented to you. So, that's the window of time that we're looking for.
So, we're going to need to add that to the calendar, probably in February, maybe, right?
As soon as I have a definite date for it, I will make sure that you have it.
We've tentatively put it in a January meeting, but right now, we're just waiting to see when we can get our hands on the draft.
Okay, alright.
I have a comment. We should make sure the Audit Advisory Committee is included in the process, so that they have comments for the school committee on the audit report.
So, what's your vision on that?
They should see the draft, and-
Oh, well, might have been, sure.
-to, you know, meet and talk about it, and make recommendations, or not, I guess the case may be.
Okay, have at it. You have a gun? Thanks.
I'll hope then.
Okay. Alright.
So, I have in front of you here the monthly expenditure report for the month of November, I mean, for October. We don't have a contract yet qualified, so that being said, as soon as those salaries have been adjusted, hopefully in November, I'll have all of those numbers in place, and we should be able to move forward with a more accurate, not that anything's going to change dramatically, but, you know, I'll have a little bit more detail for you. Does anybody have any questions about this report?
Questions? Anything that we should be watching for? Anything you want to make us aware of, put it on the radar?
As far as, well, not at this point. As the winter continues, we may want to look at some things, you know, as far as snow accumulation, you know, what they're predicting or whatever.
Yeah, no, there's no...
Nothing really, no.
You guys been with this? Also, and FY19?
Fiscal year 19, we are right now compiling all of the different budgets from all the different departments. We're near completion. We're going to have a document, as Superintendent Clancy mentioned, for, it's a preliminary document, and it will be ready for presentation on next Wednesday. So this will not have revenue projections yet.
And that's really important to note, no revenue projections. Because we, as we sit here, it's just so early. We have no idea what the revenue is going to be like.
Right. And we have to wait until we have quite a few big numbers in that budget as revenue flow, their state generated. We don't have them.
But you'll give us a look at it before we get to our workshop, which I think is important.
Yes.
Any revenue that we know of by that point in time, yeah.
So any questions?
Any questions about that?
All right. So let's jump into new business. And we have our Neshova Regional High School Facility Advisory Subcommittee recommendation. And I think Bob Skansky and his gang, if you guys all want to come up and say, or introduce yourselves, and if there were members that haven't been able to make it, do you want me to let you do the intro on this?
Just about.
So the charge for this group was to review the documents that had already, the volume of documents, there's a lot of data that's been gathered and analyzed on the high school from, from internal groups within the district. And the reason that this group was put together was to determine if we, if you thought that a statement of interest was an important step to take. And I'm going to turn it over to Bob, because I think Bob can speak to, to this best.
Thank you for having us here tonight. The Neshova Regional High School Facility Advisory Committee initially met on September 25th of this year to consider whether or not to recommend to the school committee that it submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. This committee consisted of two volunteers from each town who applied for the position, and one school committee member from each town. In the course of the following weeks, we reviewed the evaluation of the school contained in the 2008 feasibility study. We reviewed the 2016 Neshova High School Space Needs Task Force final report of 41 pages, the June 2016 enrollment forecast commissioned by the school committee, and the MSBA's 2017 frequently asked questions posted on the MSBA's website. The following October 30th, just over a month later, the committee overwhelmingly voted in favor of recommending the school committee submit a statement of interest to the MSBA. On behalf of members of the Facility Advisory Committee, I wish to thank the school committee for allowing us to participate in this act.
Thank you.
Let's introduce the folks that are with you.
Great.
Hello, Erica Benedict from Stowe.
Liz Camilleri from Bolton.
Julianne North from Stowe.
And you had other members who, do you remember who they were? Lynn Colletti, aw, from Stowe. And Neil Darcy from Bolton. And Susan Riordan from Lancaster. Those are the three schools. And then there was a gentleman from...
Jay Moody.
Jay Moody from Lancaster. Is that it? I think we're good. All right. So your recommendation is?
That the school committee submit a statement of interest to the MSBA for the high school.
All right. So do any of you have anything you want to, to add? Anything you want to share with us? Bob, can you help people understand what a statement of interest is?
Well, the MSBA is the Massachusetts School Building Authority. They're paid directly, they get their money not out of the budget, but directly out of the sales tax. And they have a very well-defined process that's been in place for years and years and years on how a community can go about engaging with them to renovate or, in some cases, if you need a new school, build a new school. The first step in that process is a statement of interest, in which the school district or the town goes ahead and says, we wish to engage, we wish to have the MSBA's help in addressing these issues within our school district. And the MSBA has, has a list of seven very broadly defined issues that they're interested in taking care of. The statement of interest is not a commitment on the school district's part. It is just that, a statement of interest. It's there to pique the interest of the MSBA. The MSBA in turn will follow up on the statement of interest by sending out people to learn more about the school district. It does not ask for specific problems. It asks for a broad range of problems. The MSBA wants to determine the scope of these problems on their own. And if the MSBA thinks that this is a project that they would like to be further engaged in, they will accept the statement of interest and then extend to the school district and offer to engage in a feasibility study. At that point, there needs to be a commitment of money and manpower if, if the school district wishes to go forward. But the statement of interest is just a response to an invitation to the MSBA. Do we have some issues? We'd like to help you, we'd like to ask you to help us solve them.
And to identify what they are.
And to identify what they are. So there are no, the SOI makes absolutely no recommendations on how any of these problems should be solved. It is just a broad statement of, we've got issues with some classrooms. We've got issues with overcrowding. We've got, we've got some age-related deficiencies with our buildings. Whatever kinds of things, again, the MSBA has seven criteria, and you try to find how many of them you can address in hopes of making this an appealing project to them. And again, they turn around to their research, and eight or 10 months later, they get back to you as to whether or not they will invite you, extend an invitation to join in a feasibility study.
All right. So does anybody on the school committee have any questions for this group? Do you understand what the statement of interest is now? Ms. Steve?
Yeah. Oh, the seven criteria, how many do you feel that we fit?
As I sit here right now, I don't remember all of them, but my recollection was, last time I looked in on me, it was two or three of them.
Two or three, come here. Give us an idea of what those two or three criteria are.
I think we could say we have age-related issues with the science labs, in that they're very rigidly arranged. You know, all the furniture is very fixed, and there's some space constraints there. I think there are some issues with mechanical systems. And...
Windows and roofs, I thought you guys said.
Well, windows and roofs are kind of the more specialized grants that they have. You know, we, we did have an issue with overcrowding. That was, that was one of them, but that issue's going away. Are we technically overcrowded at the high school now? Because they don't want you to project anything. So if we're, if we're one student overcrowded this year, we can say we've got overcrowding.
I think if you look at the square footage, from what I can remember from the, the task force, if you looked at the square footage, it tells a different story than when you actually look at the way the building is cut up and the allocation of the space. And it's not like you've got walls that can be moved easily. They're cinder block walls that can't be moved. So I think that was part of the issue, is it's not that the square footage, it was the structure within the way the building is...
The way the space is allocated, more than, than the total square foot. You know, if, so, the high school, to my knowledge, has no, there's no imminent danger, there's no accreditation issues, which is one of the seven criteria, right? Concord-Carlyle had to address accreditation issues. North Middlesex had to address accreditation issues. We're not in that boat. So there's some good, some categories you don't want to be in, right? There's no health and safety issues that I'm aware of at the high school, which would be another criteria. But we fit at least two of those very solidly.
And just for the sake of, if you ever go onto the Massachusetts School Building Authority website, it's very easy to navigate to find out the information that, that...
The amount of information they provide is overwhelming.
It's phenomenal, yeah. And just FYI too, I did speak with them today, and they're opening up the statement of interest process first week of January in 2018, so.
Do you need a vote?
Yeah, we need, so basically how this would go potentially tonight, and I say potentially because it's totally up to you how you want to address this, your committee has come forward and given you their recommendation. Now, you have to decide if that's something you want to move forward with or not. Now, if the answer is yes, you want to move forward, then you need to make a motion tonight to direct me to prepare the SOI. Now, I can't do that by myself. I mean, that's going to be a mammoth undertaking, as Bob and I talked about this earlier. Once that SOI is developed, then we bring it back to the school committee for a full flight, like this very specific language in the motion that has to be made in order to submit it. So that's not where you are tonight. Where you're at tonight is if you're going to direct me to start the process, you have to start to prepare the SOI or not.
So personally, since nobody else is doing that, I think we need to do this. Because I think we need to know from the people that do this every day, day in and day out, and they're the experts, do an evaluation of the building for us, please. I mean, that I know gets down to the feasibility level, so I'm jumping the gun here. But personally, I think we need to do it because we've got, well, we don't really need to do anything. Well, we do need, we need a brand new building. We need to do a renovation. We need to do an addition. We need to bring in more portable classrooms. I mean, I, we, I want the experts to tell us. Because we've got a lot of people look at it, a lot of people spend a lot of time. Come and tell us what it's going to take, what your recommendation is, and, and then we decide, do we want to move forward with a feasibility study or not. But at that point, we know what the options are. We know what the issues are. We know, we know, we can discuss, are there enough issues that it doesn't make sense for us to take it on ourselves? Or are there a few issues that we possibly could take on ourselves? But we don't know those answers. And I don't feel comfortable not doing anything or just jumping in to do something. I want the guidance. So that's where I'm at. Anybody else have any thoughts? Lynn, I know you do.
Oh, I said, well, no, it's a, it doesn't cost us anything. It's, we get this in the process. And we always have the option to say no. So, I mean, at this point in time, it's a no-brainer until we start.
Anybody else?
I would be interested in seeing some of the documents that the committee reviewed. They're not online. So I would like to just get a sense of the kinds of things they looked at.
So the things that they looked at...
I'm surprised to hear that, because they were online a month ago. All of the documents, the old feasibility study and all that stuff was available on...
It was all online.
It was the NEASK study, it was the Space Study Task Force, and the former feasibility study.
So I looked this morning in all the minutes, minutes and agendas.
No, Mark, it's under the old Task Force tab.
Oh, so it's beyond in the, in the previous committee's page.
But it's at the bottom of the, the current committee's tab. It's the bottom of that.
Okay.
There's a tab that leads it to the next page.
Okay.
Oh, good. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, so...
I know, I just wanted to take advantage of you to thank, to thank the committee too for, that was a lot of work. That was a lot of reading, a lot of very rich discussion. I'd like to point that out too. Very, very rich discussion. And I'm very respectful of the fact that you took a lot of time out of your lives to come in and do that and discuss the topic so thoroughly, so, so thoroughly.
So you folks looked at the documents, and you folks walked the building. So are there any, is there anything as part of the committee that you want to add? I'm not trying to force you to speak. I think it would just be helpful.
It was an easy decision for me after, I read all the documents. And then by the time the tour was finished, it was very clear to me that, that there was a need to do something, which was all that we were asked to do is decide whether or not something was needed to be done. And that was absolutely clear to me. Easy choice.
And someone, I don't remember, Lynn, it might have been you, someone used the analogy of doing a home inspection. You have this building, and what, maybe it was Lorraine that said that, I don't remember. Sorry. No, but it just, when you, when whoever said that, said that, I was like, oh, of course, we own this building. Of course, we want, like, give us the laundry list of what's going on, and then make an educated decision.
Julianne, share with us, with us your thoughts.
I think, I think the committee voted.
Okay. All right. So given that, does somebody want to make a motion?
I need that the school committee authorize superintendent to complete the MSBA statement of interest form.
Okay. And do I have a second? Elise, anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Yes, I do. This advisory committee examined the various other strategies towards improving or repairing the high school. Did it look at self-financing as opposed to engaging with the state?
That really isn't...
I don't understand what...
We didn't look, we didn't look at any remedies. We didn't look at any remedies.
That wasn't the charge.
That wasn't the charge at all.
No, no remedy, we did not look at any remedies. And, and that's in line with what the SOI does. The SOI does not ask for any remedies. It doesn't ask if you want to build. It doesn't ask if you want to renovate. It doesn't ask anything about money and costs. So what we looked at was, was in line with the question of, of the statement of interest.
And I think we need to know what we need to know.
Right.
And we're not, none of us are going to pretend to be experts. I mean, we can only look at the information that we have that's been presented to us through multiple years of space studies, task force, and feasibility studies, everything else that's out there. And just find somebody who has that expertise to bring this forward and say, hey, here's some options. I mean, I don't know, I, I think something needs to be done. And I'd be shocked if anyone walked through there and could honestly walk out saying, nothing needed to be done. What needs to be done, I don't know. I mean, it could, it could be just, you know, a few things here and there that would take care of the situation. Or it could be much more drastic than that. I just don't know. And I'm not going to pretend. And I don't think anyone honestly is qualified on any level around, you know, any of the groups that have got together to make that decision.
Okay.
And someone question. Do we want to add, just to ease everybody, that this is coming back here for a final vote, once, once the SOI is done?
Yeah, we don't need to add it to the motion, but it will have to come back here because that, the motion is just to direct the superintendent to prepare the SOI, not just...
Again.
And then the, the language is like a block like this, if we end up, it won't, right? So, yeah, we're not there.
It's very prescribed language.
Good? All those in favor of submitting the SOI?
Well, not preparing.
Preparing the SOI. Thank you, Mark. It's unanimous.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Unit A contract, but we are not prepared for that tonight. So we're going to take that to an upcoming, quickly upcoming meeting. And we've got two presentations tonight, one on pre-K and one on technology. So I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Sure. And I'll have the, the folks that are presenting for pre-K come and join us at the table. You'll probably have to drag your chair here too. So we'll, we'll introduce the folks to the table as soon as they get here. So at the table before you, you have Cindy Maxfield, our coordinator of early education, Joan DeAngelis, our director of... So, at the table before you, you have Cindy Maxfield, our coordinator of Early Education, Joan DeAngelis, our director of pupil and personnel services, Principal Joel Bates, Florence Sawyer, Principal Ross McHaren in Stowe Central School, and Principal Sean Rocher at Mary Worland St.
Thanks for coming in after a full, full day in your schools, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Tonight, we're going to, we're going to start the discussion, but I'm going to tee it up a little bit because I want to tee it up very similar to how we would tee up the K discussion, and that is that we're really not here to talk about money as such, so I want to kind of put that on the table first. What, what we found is we had to really make sure that we'd come to terms philosophically with where we stood in terms of both pre-K and K, and by the way, these were very different discussions. There was a little bit of intertwining of the two, but for the most part, they were pretty separate discussions. We talked about structure, we talked about the structure that we could see district-wide and inside of each building, we looked at how it differed, could differ from this year to next year, we talked about changing the focus and what the focus really is for pre-K because the focus for pre-K is definitely different than the focus for K, and so it was a case of kind of bringing that all together. I think at the forefront of all of our work, all of the time, is what's in the best interest of children, and so that sat on the table front and center. The other thing that I know Ross will often tease me about this is I've always looked for consistency across the district, so that it doesn't matter where your child goes to school, inside of the Shobwa Regional School District, they are getting basically the same thing, no matter what community they're in, so that's very important to us. I want to also put out there that, this is probably the only real link to, to money, is that again this year, even as we're watching the expenditures and the revenue for our, our pre-K, the fees themselves don't cover the program, and we need to make sure that we say that again, the fees don't cover the full cost. The school district in essence picks up the balance on that, so I just want to put that out there as well. So, I'm going to tee it up with Joan starting, but the fact that you've got your entire team in front of you should send a message that they are speaking from one lens this evening, so I will make sure that you're all speaking at some point in time, but I, I think Joan, if you can start us off, and then if you, I feel you're leaving out any holes, I'll quickly, we're to fill it in.
Thanks, thanks for having us. We have done probably a three-month-long study to really look at our preschool programs, and I think that, I was here early in September and there was really question about the difference between regular ed preschool and special ed preschool and what the requirements are. So, you know, I'm here to say that integrated preschool, we are required to do preschool programs really to serve our special ed students and give them an opportunity to provide, to get a few things, academic instruction, related services, because we all want kids to have original experience and come to a level playing field to make on the kindergarten. So, we had a variety, we have a variety of programs in place, and I think what we dug into was, what does our program look like, what is the definition of our program, and what is our mission? So, we, this year currently, we have two, three, four, and five half-day programs, and we have five-day preschool programs. So, we just looked at that model that seemed to be an awful lot, and we started to really do some research about what's the difference between two half-days and three half-days, what's the difference between four half-days and five half-days? We found some real similarities in terms of how we are providing services to students, and we felt like it really made sense to really consolidate what we offer and have less options and more, a more thoughtful approach. So, we worked on a, a new brochure, which you all I hope have in front of you now, to really talk about what our mission is, what the goals of preschool are, kind of what the day in the life of a preschooler is, and on the back really talks about program options. You have a sample, just so there's more language for you to have, of what, what do we do on a three-half-day program, what does a five-day half-day program focus on, and what are two, our two full-day preschool programs focus on? And obviously, we make recommendations based on what students need while we're in an IEP meeting, based on intensity supports, related services that students need. So, we're here to say tonight that we think that we should have three-half-day programs, a five-half-day program, and two full-day five programs. We think consolidating makes more sense. When we looked at the differences between the two and three half-days and then started to really factor in, you know, SNAP and recess and related services, we're like, how much preschool education time are kids getting in a two-day, so we really thought that the recommendation should be three so they could get some more of that rich instruction that we provide. I would say the same of the four-half-day and the five-day, for students who really need that structured support, coming to school every day, getting them prepared for kindergarten is really important, and it really gives them an opportunity to build social skills and have the consistency of structure of a, like, similar to a K program. So, that's one recommendation we have, is to really consolidate our offerings and think about how we provide comprehensive services that make sense. So, I have, you know, the detailed description of what we think students need that you have in front of you. The other thing is, we, we talked about what is our enrollment, so we looked at their enrollment over the last three years. Our model seems a little bit blended between a regular ed program and a special ed program, and so what we found was our programs were undersubscribed for special ed students, so there is a slide.
They have it on there.
Oh, you have it, okay.
It, it's the sheet that should look like this.
No, it's in the packet, sorry.
So, as you can see above is kind of what we have currently at each school center, Florence Sawyer and Mary Worland St., so you want to look this way.
Joan pointed out it's both alphabetically and geographic.
Thanks, Joel. So, if you look at each of the programs, you can see how many, you know, we typically have five special ed students with 10 role models, with the exception of Center School, they have one model that is seven special ed students and eight role models. But if you look across, both our special ed slots are very minimally filled, and, you know, we do have some openings in terms of our regular ed role model slots. So, right now, we have 29 special ed slots across the district that are filled, we have 29 slots open, and our total slot availability is 58. When you look at our role model slots, we have 97 regular ed students coming into our preschool program, we have 13 slots open, and the total number of slots is 113. So, if our focus, which I think it is, is an integrated preschool for special ed kids, we start thinking about what are our program needs? So, this is what we currently have, and this is what we're proposing that we need. So, I want to talk a little bit, because I think I was here last night to talk a little bit about alignment of programming, so one of the things I'll tell you is in Bolton right now, Mr. Bates has little links in his building, which really is a preschool program, and the students then go down to MRE to Mr. Rocher's building because he has links one. So, our students have high needs, and I don't like to move our highest-need students a lot, I don't think that's good, I don't think it's good for planning, and when I think about articulation between staff members, I think it's better if the programs are in one location, so why are we moving our needs to students the most? I think part of it was a space issue, so when we put the program here, honestly, it's because obviously school districts are always looking at classrooms, so one of the recommendations is actually to move little links from Bolton to MRE so that when students are, you know, they're getting used to the building and then they don't have to leave and refamiliarize themselves with another building, so that there's kind of that thoughtful strand that I talked about last time I was here in terms of our elementary programs. And I would say the same of, MRE has the, has a program that really belongs at, in Stowe at Center School, so we would move that program, and that's our Beginning Connections program, which would be our preschool, and we just opened, as you know, Class Connections, so in terms of continuity of service and providing, we're moving kids less by having them start in the buildings, and if they need that level of service, they stay in the same place, and teachers are able to coordinate and talk about students meaningfully and thoughtfully, and we're doing, you know, positive transitions without making them move from buildings. So, and then we have Sunrise, so those are the kids that really need a structured five-day program for consistency, routine, social skills development, and that would be here in Bolton. So, those are kind of the setup of our five-day programs, but just so you can kind of see the path going forward makes sense so kids don't have to move as often. So, that's one thought process. The other thought process is that we would have four three-half-day programs, two in Lancaster because we have, we would have a substantially separate program, so we would want some role model opportunity in the morning and the afternoon for students to be able to participate with role models, and then two half-day, three-day programs, one at Center and one in Bolton. So, that's like a lot of information, right?
No, it just, actually, I mean, I'm going to, when you guys are, I'm going to ask these folks to talk, it just sounds like it's a thoughtful, structured, from the, from the needs of the student, the student that these programs are supposed to be designed for. So, I, I really do like that because I'm not, I'm not well-versed. And I do have a quick question though, in the current structure, you have 29 special education slots filled and 29 special education slots open. So, my question is, we have those open slots, what happens, do those slots have to remain open, with balance of the year?
They do, because those are the classes that exist right now in the district. Right now, we have 11 sections of preschool that are open, and I, and I'm not sure we need that many for integrated special education preschool.
So, you've got 40 slots that are currently open and not being utilized, and, and what, three-quarters of them are for the kids that this program is intended for?
That's right.
Yes.
Okay.
So, in the new model, what we did was we reduced the number of slots by eight. When we looked at projections across the year, we, we've run between, in the last three years of preschool students, between 28 and 37 students, so obviously, we want to be careful, we don't want to have not enough slots and then realize that we need to open a section, so we want to be careful and thoughtful about that. But in the new model, there's a significant reduction in terms of what would be available for slots for role models significantly, so I, I want to mention that, you know, I'm sure that that's noteworthy.
All right, do you folks, before I ask the school committee, do you folks have anything you want to add about the proposal?
I, I think it was, you know, we've been part of the work, and I think it's time for us to look at all of the different, it creates some inconsistency in terms of what we offer in, you know, Florence Sawyer School, Center, Worland St., and, and to have, you know, more of a consistent approach. Curriculum is the same, but you can see from the chart in the current proposal that there are a lot of different configurations of how that lays itself out, and, and, and that can be tough if there are, you know, slots filled in one town and then they're coming in, and then you're trying to sort of make that timeline fit when you don't necessarily have a class set up, so for consistency's sake, I appreciate this work.
I think I would add, just, you know, as the least senior member of the principals group here, understanding over the last couple of years what the difference, you know, not only within Center School, the difference between a two-day and a three-day half-day, and what dictates the needs for a student to be in that, but then looking across the district where we have two-day, three-day, four-day, and, you know, five-day, five-day or full day, but what the difference is for the needs of the student, I think is the work that Joan's done to build consistency, and I'm also excited about the idea of, you know, of putting in, you know, the Beginning Connections strand at Center, which could lead to the current Class Connections, which we're building, so while it's still very, it's a young idea at Center, and I think the long-term effects are very impactful for the needs of the students that we're trying to address, that we haven't been able to over the last several years. So, it's a, it's a district resource, but I think it works well.
But what you just said is really key, right? It's something we've been trying to address and we haven't been able to, so you're looking at it, and I've not talked with these folks, I'm sure everybody knows, but you're looking at it more, I don't want to say creatively, much more innovatively based on the needs of the student, but in a way, it's just so simple. It just, you know, it's like the simple, it's the simple ideas that generally are the best ideas, but I think that's really important, what you said. Sean?
I don't really have anything else more to add, I mean, I think the, you know, shifting of the Little Links program with the thoughts makes perfect sense, you know, terrific for the students. I think, you know, I've been here a long time, but haven't seen all this data in one place. I think that really, it, it gives you a really good perspective of what's going on, what, you know, we've opened slots, how we can do this more effectively for the students, so I, you know, I appreciate kind of dialoguing this and then, and then seeing it all in one place, it's awesome.
All right, I'm going to ask, I'm going to, I want to hear from everyone who thinks this is kind of important, so...
It's a new team.
Cindy, I'm sorry.
Sean, I don't have anything to add, it's all been said.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right, Elise, what are your thoughts?
You turn it to me because I, I work in special ed. No, I, I mean, this all makes sense to me, and, and sort of as when Joan was here before talking about having alignment between programs and not moving students around makes a lot of sense to me. It does, you, so we are, we would be cutting, or you would be cutting the program, like, in terms of size quite significantly, do you think the impact of that will be, I mean, in terms of how many, sorry, clearly I need to last one.
No, it's small. It was hard to get this all on one sheet.
So, right now, you know, obviously, there's quite a, a big difference in the number of students, you know, it's a much smaller group of, of special ed students, and we're talking 97, you said role model slots filled, and you're talking about cutting that down to 48, and that will balance things a lot more, obviously, you know, when you're looking at how you spread it out, but, you know, are we consistently kind of turning kids away as it is?
For these role model slots?
Or...
Well, we've got empty slots.
There's empty slots, yeah, that's like...
Right, 10, right? 13.
You know, I'm getting, I'm going to finish with that, so go ahead.
No, no, I'm just thinking about, you know, when I was sending my own kids to preschool and doing the lottery, and to me, it was, as a parent, it was really important to have them be, start at MRE preschool so that by the time they got to kindergarten, everything's familiar, they knew these kids, these kids were their friends, you know, and we were fortunate, we always got our first choice in what we want, we got good lottery numbers, but I'm wondering what the impact will be on families who may not be able to get slots in, you know, and obviously, they're not the first priority because this is an integrated preschool, but it also is nice to have all of our children be together from the beginning as a parent, you know, and you get to know, you know, I'm glad that my kids got to know kids in the integrated preschool, and now they, you know, these kids are very familiar with them.
Okay, I'm going to toss it over to Susan.
I, I think it's great that it's, that it's based on student needs, and I, and I really, I appreciated when my older daughter was in preschool, I think it had just started the integrated preschool, and it was valuable then, I think, and I, I think it still is, and to keep that as the focus of the program, I think, makes the most sense. There are, there are, I understand what you're saying, but I think there are other opportunities for private, you know, private schools, for them to meet kids from the area or the town, you know, so I, I think it's a great shift.
And I'm going to jump to Kathy, I'm, I'm, I'm asking the folks on the school committee who have educational background, and then we'll get to those of us that are laypeople, and I'm going to go to the boys in a minute too, but Kathy, what do you think?
Well, I, I appreciate the thoughtful approach to looking at this and looking at data to make a decision, because it really was a concern to me when I saw this information for the first time last year and saw that, you know, the integrated preschool is intended as a special ed program, and to... and to move students to it, and you have two classes there that don't have any spent students in them at all, but you have 14. So it just seemed like it wasn't the best way to put a program together. And I understand that in an ideal world, we would, all the students that live in three towns, they'd be able to go to preschool at their school. But I think the intent is to have an integrated preschool, but to make it work programmatically, but also as cost-effectively as we can. I think it's great that you've thought about the transitions and it makes sense the way that it is set up. So I guess my question has to do with when people, like a typical student, accepts a spot, is going to a spot, are they guaranteed that they will go to the school in the town where they live? Or is that, so it could be anywhere across the district? Okay.
I'm curious, what is the general mandated proportion of model students to special students? And what is the range that you experience in your professional score?
So the law says that we can have seven special ed students to eight role models. 51, 49 is the percentage rate, and that's kind of what we have proposed. We also could go to a model where they allow us to do five special ed students to 15 regular ed students, which is a class of 20. And I think we've talked about the management of that many students in a preschool and how well do we service kids that are three and four with a class size of 20. I think that's why we recommended this ratio.
And is it hard to predict the number of special ed kids that are coming forward each year? Is it really kind of just wait and see and you?
We have to look at trends over time. So we looked at a three-year trend. So yes, I think it's hard to predict. You never know who's gonna move in. You know, we can, you know, look at how many students, you know, based on the census, live birth rate. But if we looked across the district, you know, we said, you know, 15% of kids, that's, we're about 15.5 identified students that have special ed. So I would say preschool is pretty consistent with that. You know, some years have been a little bit higher where we're providing services. And then the earlier we provide the service, obviously, then sometimes kids don't need services later. So, you know, sometimes the numbers can be a little bit inflated, but that's our job, is to do things early and do them well.
Lynn?
I've been doing a lot of reading since Kerry and you came up. And I'm actually thrilled that Pre-K is gonna be servicing what its intent is, is what it sounds like. Because everything I'm reading says it all starts with, so yeah, thank you.
Wow, you got a thank you on Lynn Colletti. What time is it? What's the date? Woo!
This is small.
I'm sorry.
Steve, what do you think?
I like the, I like the idea that we're consolidating the number of choices in each location and spreading, spreading the students, you know, basically fairly evenly across the program. I think that's, that's good. I remember we kind of did the same kind of thing for K. Before the school started, we talked about, before school year started, we talked about that and balance.
Yes, you're right, we did.
We were able to balance it out and utilize the resources more efficiently. And I think this will move us in that direction as well. So I like it. And thank you for working on it.
Yes, this chart makes it so clear, doesn't it?
It is, definitely, yeah.
Of course.
And I save the best for last.
Neil. That's on camera. So coming from the total non, like, this is like the layperson approach. It just seems that this is a much more holistic approach to the program. And if I understand integrated, I mean, we have an integrated program. We don't have a Pre-K program. We have an integrated Pre-K program. And I understand there's a difference between the two. The integrated is to deal with the special needs students as the primary resource, providing the role models or whatever, is that what you call them?
Yes, yes.
To work with it. So I personally like the idea, and this is layperson, but the one-to-one ratio. Because, you know, I, it just, I think, provides more exposure for the children to interact with each other on a more consistent basis. Now, that being said, you know, this is kind of a district that's always had a very grounded and well-thought-of reputation for special needs and the ability to address that. And I think that this takes that to another level at this point in time because we really are focusing on where we should be focusing.
Thank you.
Wow. Anything else? I'm gonna toss something out there because I, Elise, I-
I have one other small question.
Yep.
With regard to, so this year, we have 29 special ed and 29 that were empty. And with the proposed, you know, clearly, we've never really, or at least in this chart, haven't had an issue with filling the role model slots. But if we're proposing 48 special education slots, do we think we're going to fill those 48? Or is it gonna be similar to what it is now, where all 48 role model spots get filled? And, you know, we've got 29 or so, so there's still a bunch of empty special ed slots. And then we're not having that parity, you know, here in terms of sort of what Neil was just saying with the one-to-one. I mean, it's coming a lot closer. And we're not ending up with this, you know, zero and 14, but.
So one of the things I want to say is if you look at our five full-day preschool, that is really an intensive classroom program. So six of those slots are represented there. So, you know, that brings us down to really 42 in terms of numbers that we have available. I don't want to call it too tight. We can't always predict the future. We're, you know, we've had as high as 35, 36, 37. So I think we need to be careful to have enough slots. So we're not coming back saying we need to create another half-day program. I want to be careful about that. I think that, you know, and six of those slots are really dedicated to that intensive program. So that really brings us to 42. I didn't want to cut it any closer than that.
And I think it's always, it's important to note, we don't know until, like, we're about this time of the year that you say, oh, okay, this is what happened, you know? So I would agree with her. And I think, I'm not sure who, I think maybe the chairman of the law school. We've been really, really thoughtful about this process. I personally, and I said that to them today, you know, I feel really good about where we've landed here because I do believe that we're putting the focus where it needs to be. And I do feel that this, this model will be more effective from that lens. So my question, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna do this because I know, I, and again, I don't do what you folks do. So let's assume we have 48, and you probably already answered this, and you do too, and you do too, and you do too. But you have 48 special ed slots. And you've, we're, this time next year, and there's 24 kids, which means there's 24 special ed slots that are still open, which we need to preserve in some way for children who may move in. Would we not want, I don't even know how to say this, this might not be, I, would we not consider bringing in a couple of reg ed kids into those open slots in order to allow some of those families who would like to?
So one of the things that, you know, certainly is an option, I think our three-day programs, we're not gonna have a hard time filling. You know, just.
With either student.
With either student. When we look at our five-day programs, you know, we could have less special ed students. We may not have seven. And if we see over the course of the year that we're not going to fill those slots, we could build and do the role model slots and have, you know, five special ed students with 10 role models. So we could expand that way, yes.
Okay.
And I think that's something that we look at, even with the current programming that we have now.
Make sure that we leave some.
We have to leave some.
Well, the integrity of the program is really about special ed students. I mean, frankly, like, this warms my heart because this is what we should be doing. Serving those kids, yes.
So with open special ed slots, would we ever take a tuition kid from another town?
I think if we appropriately conserve another student from another town, yes.
Does that follow?
Would that say there's a long-term commitment?
It's not a choice, it's free.
It's a tuition, it would be tuition.
Very, very different.
Pay a tuition for the child.
We've done it. We've done it. I mean, we have Little Links. It's a highly intensive program. It's very specialized. You know, not all districts around are able or have a population of students to provide. And they have sought us out to do that. So I think that we need to make sure, though, it's a right fit and they have to feel like it's a right fit. And, you know, we kind of relook at it after the preschool years are over.
All right, Neil.
It has to do with, Elise and me, we're both talking about numbers. So I think the disappointing thing with that program was to see, like, zero children in 10. And so we could end up, and is there something to keep it from happening again? In other words, so, yeah, okay, we take that scenario where there's 24 slots. But that doesn't mean we make another class or two of zero and 12 or something like that, right? I mean, if we would figure out some way of integrating that so that it wouldn't end up like that. Is that the plan?
Right.
Yeah, I think we want to take a very thoughtful lens to the complexion of that class moving forward. So I would agree with you.
And I think we do that well at IUP meetings to begin with. We really look at what are the services and needs and where the best, where is the best spot for that student to get that service. So I think we're careful about that. We're looking at numbers and talking about that along with, you know, staff and support.
Okay. Kathy, we're gonna wrap it up after here.
Yeah, this represents a change. And so what is the plan for a rollout in communication? Because if previously we had over 100 slots for role model students and it's going down to 48, people will want to look for the preschool opportunities for their children rather than later. So.
So if you're comfortable with this model and you're approved, you know, approve this model, I think the next step would be to notify families of kind of what is, what's going to be available and are they interested? We have some kids in a two-day program, some in a four, some people don't want a five-day or don't want three days. So I think we would send letters to our returning students to see what, you know, what they were interested in and let them know that we're going to a new model format.
When does, when do, okay, so this, sorry, can I get the words up? When typically do the letters go from, when do parents typically, I don't remember, it's been a couple of years? Not ours, because last year, we did not handle that well. But when do parents typically start looking for preschool opportunities?
Well, they're looking now, and usually, registration is in January.
Oh, okay, okay, that makes sense. So we need to, we need to have an answer by December.
Right. We have sent out even information about our preschool in December, letting people know we would be having a registration in January. Under this, with this, we probably won't need a registration. We'll have enough slots for the children returning next year.
Oh.
Only, if they all decide to.
I was gonna say, we want to be cautious in how we say that. We're really not, I think, we're really not sure. But that's something that we have had discussion on as a group. So your point is well made. All right, Neil.
That is actually a question I have on the phasing. So you have some children who might be two years in the program. How is that all gonna play out? Do you know what I mean? So if you've got kids that are two years in the program, does that mean that you have, and I'm talking about regular ed students. So how does that affect the actual slots that might be available?
Would you guarantee them the slot for the following year?
Right, and as you phased in, because that could be really disruptive, too, if that's not, you know.
So does that, so.
If we end up without a slot for someone, that's what I'm saying. It doesn't, according to these numbers, it looks like we'll be able to accommodate all our returning children because we've done the numbers on how many will go to kindergarten next year. However, we won't have spaces beyond that unless some of the children choose not, or families choose not.
Okay, so we're not displacing kids. Okay.
That comes with the timing thing, though. So that those people, in my mind, do you have an earlier time that they should be letting you know that before the registration process so that they aren't, you know, so people aren't registering and then finding out, oh, wait, there is a slot that's there? Because then it's gonna run into that whole big debacle.
We would do the same thing, like the lottery process. Like last year, we did, you know, a commitment to our three-year-olds and the four-year-olds that are coming in. Obviously, we don't make them go through the lottery, so they're guaranteed a slot. But I think in this new model, because we don't have as many options, we need to say, are you interested in a three-day versus a two-day model or a five-day versus a four-day model? And then we'll, you know, we'll be able to make decisions from there.
If we have too many children, say, everybody wanted the three-day or everyone wanted the five-day, that's when we go to a lottery, even with the children in our program. We've done that in the past.
But you're vetting us on an earlier date, though, so that the normal registration process isn't tweaked or fetched by that, right? So all the currents are geared up? Okay.
So when do they all commit to?
In January.
Guys, we gotta get it together. There's a lot of chatter. Go ahead. Are you, are you, when do they actually commit to going? Do they, they actually have to commit in January to next year?
Yeah, we would, what we have done in the past, we send a letter and say, are you coming back next year? And which program do you want? They check it off. If we have too many returning students wanting the same classroom, that's when we go to a lottery for them, saying, well, you know, you can't get into the three-day.
Has it always been like that?
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't seem different.
So that's not gonna be different now, so.
All right, so I think I need to know what you folks want to do, school committee.
Do we have, do we move to accept it?
Well, well, I guess there's two questions. You've kind of all stated where you feel on this. It does require a vote. Are you prepared to vote tonight? Do you want to wait?
For what?
I'm concerned about people being aware.
This is, of course.
This is news.
Right.
And so if people are anticipating 100 slots are available and that's not the case, then they need to know sooner rather than later.
Well, that's, yeah, but I mean, the communication plan for this has to be really tight because we didn't.
They're waiting for approval.
Right. So also, your suggestion is to go ahead and, I mean, anybody can throw a motion on the floor.
My question is, why do we need a motion to do something that falls within the superintendent's power?
You're completely changing these programs. This program is completely different.
I'm wondering if, because of what happened last year, that we need a motion?
Yes.
So I'm wondering if we should move it to next week so that people can come in and have their say, and then we can make the vote.
And that's where, so I, that's where I want to be, but I don't know about the rest of you. If we can just wait a week, talk to people, get some information out there. I don't know how you feel about that, or if you want to vote tonight, somebody can throw a motion on the floor.
I'm content to wait. I'm in favor of change as opposed to, I don't mind waiting if people feel upset.
Okay.
So how long would it take you guys to actually get all that emotion? Would you be leaving me short at all? To get everything out to the people?
That's what.
Right. I mean, we would craft a letter, we would define what the programming is, and we already know who the students are. And half of our students are going to kindergarten, so you're talking about, you know, 47 or 48 students we would be sending out letters to. So we already know who those students are that are in our program currently.
Would one week make a difference?
No, I, no.
But it's not just the students in the program, too.
It's siblings, it's other families that are interested.
Person out there know what's going on, right? And so that's my, that's my, that's my fear, is not reproducing what happened last year. And the longer we wait on this, the closer we're getting to holidays and the craziness and even the chance that something's overlooked inadvertently by people during the craziness and then boom, you suddenly find out. I wouldn't be happy at all if, you know, I have something in my mind. I wouldn't be happy at all if, you know, I have something in my mind and then...
So why don't we...
I move that we approve the change in the pre-K program as specified as here.
I second.
Okay. Anybody have comments? I do. I would prefer to wait, so I'm gonna withdraw from this vote. Not that I don't like it, I just want a chance to, here.
What I'm thinking...
She's gonna beat me up.
No, I'm not, I guess that what I'm thinking about, and this isn't gonna, this is gonna sound awful, but I don't mean it in this way, it's just sort of a, I can just put it said. So we really like this, we think it's in the best interest. We have the recommendation of our principals and the director of specialization and the superintendent, and it makes sense. And if, if we have, people have an opportunity to come to a ticket in an attempt to, to change the proposal or anything, I don't want to hold out false hope and maybe, to people that they're gonna change my mind about this. And I get it, I get it, it's a change, it's more convenient to have your kid go to preschool where you live, all that stuff. I get that. But this is educationally sound, it supports the intention of having the, an integrated preschool. So that's my concern in how do people come and make comments.
Whether you vote on it tonight or not, if people are concerned, they're gonna share that.
That's my thing, I would hate, like, this isn't, if somebody comes and says, whatever, unless they say, this is great, good job. That's my only thing, I don't want to hold out false hope, because I'm not trying to change my mind.
Well, that's you, there's seven others of us, but I'm not gonna, go ahead, Susan.
I don't think that Superintendent Clenchey's made any secret, and obviously you've been here before too, about the fact that there's been, they were making attempts to change the programming, that they wanted to streamline things. It was on the agenda tonight, it's been, it's been on past agendas, so, you know, I'm not saying... I mean, I understand that we don't want to repeat the same problems that we had last year. I want to hear from the community members. I don't know that they need a personal invitation to come next week, given the fact that you've made it very clear throughout the fall that, and even last year, that this was a priority for the administration. So I, I'm with Kathy. I mean, I could go both ways, but I don't think I'll change my mind about my decision.
Oh, I'm not gonna change my mind, I just want to give people, well, maybe I will. Go ahead, Neil.
So two quick things here. So I think, spot on, in June of last year, there were multiple conversations about the fact that we would love to have you take a look at what to do with the program to align things and to make it what it was. So this is bringing that forward, in my mind. This is continuation of that conversation that's been happening, it's not something new that's just sprouted up. Now, in addition to that, it's very clearly defined, much more than it was last year in my mind or whatever. This is directed towards the special needs student. This is what it does. Frankly, you know, we need to have a different conversation about are we gonna have a pre-K program, not an integrated pre-K program, if there's a ton of other people that want to be involved. But this thing itself, I think, is dedicated to the special needs students and that's why I'm okay with voting on that now, because tomorrow, there could be a thousand people that show up and say, hey, I want it to change, but that's not helping the student, which is what this whole thing is for.
That's true, I got it.
Okay, so that's where I'm coming on that.
I got it, you're right.
I think this is much more closely aligned to the mission of the program, which as Neil and Susan have said, you know, is to serve students with special needs. And this makes it very clear. A legal obligation, but also an ethical one to be serving these students in the way that we intend to be serving them.
So the motion's on the table.
All those in favor? Did you name them? Thank you for all of your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for staying so late. But then I wanna, I wanna come back to what Neil said, so.
Again, communication is very important.
Now, just communication, okay, moving on to the next subject. Oh, Superintendent Clenchey has an announcement.
So just for our folks that are at home right now, I know that a chairman of law school just received a text saying, oh my goodness, there are police at the high school. And we knew, we knew this in advance, okay? So I'm gonna read you what the police sent to me earlier. Just wanted you to know that our police academy will be setting up a landing zone on the back of the baseball field tonight. The MSP airplane will be landing around 7:00 PM and taking off around 8:00. I think that we thought because this was happening in the dark, like, no one would notice. Well, clearly, we were wrong. Paul and Tanya, everybody's aware, in case there are any questions coming in regarding helicopter. Please let me know, see you on Saturday for football. So please relax if you're hearing about sirens and such over and seeing lights at the high school, it's all good.
Okay. Technology update.
Technology, come on up!
You guys waited so patiently, I'm sorry, we're running a little bit late.
Break discussion with a break.
We have really quiet people on this school today, nobody's got an opinion.
Yeah, we'll pull Pat close, too. So I'll just quickly tee it up and kind of let you know who's speaking tonight. Pat, as always, will be available in case you wanted to go back and do a little bit of research here with regards to any fiscal component. Now, Succi, of course, is on my left and Cindy Larson is on my right. Now, the roles are very, very different for all these people, but they all work together. Lisa Martina Kenyon is back behind because she's also teaching and learning and she's here to support Cindy and she is well. So you've got that whole teaching and learning piece. Cindy really has a focus towards the teaching and learning component of technology and the integration of it into classrooms. So she's really the academic, that educational piece of it. Succi, on the other hand, his role is to make sure that whatever the needs are over here are met. So he's more the hardware-software kind of person. He's the one that helps to establish the vision of what we need, what we have to have. All together, they worked, they are a key, and just so you know, to my staff, I did mention this when we went through MCAS, you are a key reason why our MCAS scores are the way that they are. You just did such a great job this last year, and I know that you're gonna replicate things as we move forward this year. So these are the key people that were involved in that as well. So I think you're gonna talk, and Cindy said, I'm gonna have to talk so fast tonight. And I said, yes, because we want you inside that ten minutes, so I want you to know that.
No, I appreciate, I mean, the thing is, when you give us presentations, it's understood that we're reviewing, so we don't need you to take us through them. Plus, this is such a big topic that I want to preserve the time for the school committee to ask questions. Great, so with that, Cindy, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, do you need me to elaborate anymore on what my function is?
No.
All right, great. So before we begin, I want to take the opportunity to thank all those who helped develop the 2016-2018 technology plan and articulate the goals for that plan and the vision. The progress made on those goals for the current plan is in your green packet. Do I see green packet, Pat?
I think she just got it there, she's gonna just return it to you.
And this document is entitled Educational Technology Update. This document was sent out to the district last week to keep everyone informed and it is posted on the website as well. If there are questions regarding the progress on these goals, we have slides at the end of the presentation that we can pull up so that we can address them. At this time, we would like to begin to describe the planning processes that are now in place and some insight on goals that are being proposed as we move forward to updating the existing plan. And when I say updating the existing plan, I mean we would like to see a 2018 to 2021 plan. Forgot I have this in my hand. So planning for educational technology is driven by three different factors. It's important that our students are at the center of our decision-making processes and therefore, when planning for technology at Neshoba, we begin by asking a few driving questions that help to begin our roadmap. First one is curriculum. Does the program or device align with or support Neshoba curriculum? Second one is the learning needs of all students. Does it increase accessibility to educational resources for all students? And the third one is, we always want to keep the district improvement plan in mind, does it align with the district improvement plan? Equally as important is that we vet for several areas that new programs or devices might impact. First one is security. How does the proposed technology impact the security of Neshoba's infrastructure and our data? Second one is safety. Are there safeguards in place that protect the privacy of students and staff? Is it scalable? So do we have the human resources, hardware and funding resources to support it? Can we expand it so that it becomes sustainable and equitable across the district? And then, lastly, interoperability. It is, is it compatible with our existing systems and does it promote a seamless flow of information? So these drivers I'll be referring back to and the vetting considerations as I introduce you to the proposed goals that are coming up. But in order to plan effectively for technology at Neshoba, we really need to enable all stakeholders and avenue to provide feedback and address all areas. The planning process has been restructured to a broader, more collaborative and inclusive model. So the 2017-18 Technology Committee is made up of administrators from each of the school buildings and two school committee members, so Elise and Neil. In this little diagram here, you're right in the center in the Educational Technology Committee. And I'll describe the focus groups around that. I'd like to add that our principals and our staff members who are a big part of the committee bring to the table important details of how technology is being utilized in their buildings in a variety of instructional settings. And they're excellent advocates when representing the needs of their staff and their students. So at the same time, they bring to the table a really broad district perspective. So while this committee meets every other month, focus groups meet during or after school for the purpose of targeting key technology areas around the goals. So they meet more often throughout the year. And I won't have to go in, they're up there, I don't want to go into every single one of them, but it's in the interest of time. But each of these groups has a tech committee representative and this creates a direct path of input into the planning and decision-making processes. So educators who are not participating in one of these focus groups are encouraged to go to their school administrators, go to their instructional and technology specialists, come to teaching and learning, participate in any small group technology building meetings and participate in surveys so that they have a voice in what their needs are around technology. The Educational Technology Committee will take into consideration feedback from all stakeholders when planning for technology and we're gonna make sure that it's sustainable and they're safe and that it positively impacts technology.
So can I stop you right there for a second? So are you guys, I would like to hear more about what you're doing instead of how you're structured.
Well, this is part of it, because these focus groups are meeting now, that's what's happening now. And I, if you want me to go over the focus groups, I will, but they're also in the proposed goals.
I don't know, what are you guys, I want to know what it is we're doing.
Yeah, but I think I see that, so I think...
Okay, just, I'll just keep going, Cindy, if you can, just so I know what she's looking for.
All right, so these groups do provide a continuous flow of information. They're, they collaborate, they problem solve, they collectively make decisions and they stay connected on a weekly, if not daily, basis. An Educational Technology Update, like the one you have in your packet, will be sent out every other month so that all stakeholders are kept informed about updates around technology and what's being proposed or finalized. So we had our first Technology Committee meeting on November 1st. And at that meeting, Succi and I proposed five goals that we would look at to move on into the future. So the first goal would be to develop a sustainable hardware replacement plan that includes one-to-one model devices for grades six through twelve. In the existing plan right now, this is actually two separate goals. So we have a hardware replacement plan goal, but also a separate goal for expanding one-to-one. We see that as, we would like to see the one-to-one as part of the hardware replacement plan overall and combine those two. So also new in this is that we are proposing to expand the one-to-one model to grade six through twelve in the fall of 2018, where grade six and seven students have access to a one-to-one model during the day only and they leave them in school. So driving factors for this, so some drivers were that Chromebooks really have proven to be effective in helping students have access to the curriculum. And grade six and seven teachers right now are asking for increased availability of Chromebooks as they utilize more authentic and up-to-date curriculum online resources. And at the request of teachers, library media staff are actually downsizing their text materials on the shelves that are nonfiction because teachers are asking for more online, up-to-date resources. And lastly, Chromebooks, an increasing Chromebooks would allow teachers to expose students to the next-generation assessment if they need that practice in. So the vetting considerations, of course, are availability and an up-to-date comprehensive inventory must be possible for us to reasonably plan for the replacement of devices and project costs based on age and functionality. And currently, calculations of replacement costs indicate that the cost of expanding to this one-to-one model, to this one-to-one model, is relatively the same as continuing the replacement of outdated devices. Great, goal two, the development of a cybersecurity plan and student data privacy protocols and delivery of professional development for educators. So this is a concern for all industries right now, as you probably know. And there's a growing K through twelve state initiative as well that we have joined. It's called the Massachusetts Student Privacy Alliance. Succi and I have been to a couple of workshops on cybersecurity. I'm going to an All Day One tomorrow in Connecticut that they help you plan out how you're going to protect your data and how you protect your students. So obviously, the main driver is protection of student self-privacy and protection of all of our data. And we need to, you know, vet out, you know, the availability of expert resources in this area. And we need to look at how we're going to provide professional development to staff because we do need to educate the end user, because that helps keep us safe with good practices as well. And then we want to look at cost and effectiveness of programs that will help us to provide extra security. So one of the things that, so the IT or Succi had brought into the budget last year was a program called CloudLock that provides security and protects users and online data and applications. And Succi, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's gonna be ready to probably go online.
Yes, actually, it's in place already.
Yeah, so we'll be looking at that. And then IT is also currently researching new content filters for next year that will provide more granular control. So planning of educational technology, working towards interoperability. So working towards interoperability within our systems is a goal that will be continued from the current plan, so that's already on there. The main drivers for that are the need to provide streamlined and timely access to data that's organized in a manner that supports informed decision-making. It's also aligned with our district improvement goal number one, teaching all students. We need to vet the cost effectiveness of this. So kind of, we need to move to a more holistic system. So a holistic, the cost of a holistic system that incorporates a lot of different systems that we're using now that are all separated, it makes it very difficult for staff to get data all in, like a one-stop shop and get all data that they need for students in one place. So we have developed the, I started an Integrating Systems Focus Group this year and we've met several times already. And we've already had two demonstrations from major vendors looking at how we can integrate our information systems with a learning management system that is actually, one of the things that I would like to see is that it's completely seamless with Google Apps as well. So it keeps everything in one place. So number four, teaching and learning. Obviously, well, thank you, Alita. She can tell my mouth is dry. So curriculum and learning. So curriculum and learning needs of all the students are obviously a driver for this goal, and we'll continue with providing professional development for effective practice of technology and one-to-one. We did that last year, the year before, and they were well-attended. But we also knew this year as we're developing, working with Joan, Director of PS, to develop a digital program evaluator team. And so we're doing, be conducting interviews next week for this. We've had several people apply to be on this team. This team will actually vet all the technology programs that are coming in every day in front of educators, and it's a monstrous task. So we need to make sure that we're using all those drivers and those vetting considerations when we look at new programs. And then another consideration that's new is the new digital learning computer science frameworks from Massachusetts. And the biggest change in these frameworks are that they see students as creators of technology and not just end users. So it means more computer science type things. So the vetting considerations for that are the resources on professional development, protection of student privacy, and obviously scalability and future purchases that support new standards. The last goal is to improve the NRSD websites, and that's driven by the need to have an accessibility, accessibly compliant website and ease of access to current information for all of our end users. And our vetting considerations for that are human resources and time on task and additional costs for tools that scan for accessibility. So I hope this, I mean, I could tell you more that's happening, but these are some of the groups that are happening now and actively been working since school started. Is there any questions? I think it's, we're open for questions now.
You don't have any questions?
Not at this point, not yet.
Okay.
Lynn. Is there a plan to keep all of this technology sustainable?
Yes. So any particular subject, like area you want to know, like networking, hardware?
Out.
We have a pretty clear inventory. As mentioned in this plan, we have also like, there's a fixed, almost fixed, like replacement cycle, like laptop, you know, every five years, Chromebook every four years, iPad, so on and so forth. So we do have that in front. For the software, software license is renewed on a yearly basis. I think that also is planned according to what the teacher learning need.
So Lynn, some of that is found in this educational technology update, so that would be information on the update for goal number four.
The budget for this grows continually, and I'm just wondering, that's really what I'm wondering about.
So, so fighting actually, it doesn't grow too much. Like software, all the software we use, they have only like five to 10% increase. That's almost across broad on every software we use. And this year, we increase, we add like a couple more software, a couple new software. So that, that's why you say a little bit more increase. For the hardware, I'm not sure if like you see the, like the first drop of hardware, the increase really is not much. So the one you see is, because last year, the number you see is, we take the rebate off already, but if you put that back in, it's really not much difference.
So what I would personally love to be able to see is how, so there's two sections to the presentation here, and I would love to see how one dovetails into the other. And, and what I mean by that is, you know, I jumped ahead, so that's why I didn't want to ask a question to begin with because it dovetails together. But really, how does this, how does this all focus on the students? I don't see a lot of student-driven information that's here, and that's, that's what I'm seeing. That, that's all I'm saying is like, I'm not seeing how our big initiative for one-to-one, like what is that actually doing? And that's a really, that's a big driver for technology. So how is that working in the classrooms? And I know that, that's, that's the part you're pointing to, but, but how is that working in the classrooms? What, like what is coming about from this? What, how will we, how will we even justify having a one-to-one program? And I guess what I mean by that is, is, I mean, I know some of the answers, you know, the collaboration and so forth and things that get brought forward. And I'd just love to be able to see that, maybe at a labor point or something like that, but I'd love to be able to see how, what we're, what we're spending money on is dovetailing and genuinely affecting the children and what, what that education will. Am I rambling or just not?
No, I mean, we, we have surveys that we survey the students and the parents and the staff on the use of one-to-one. So we could definitely, you know, give you those results. I know I have some results up on the one-to-one Chromebook site, and then I have more results that I gathered from last spring, and we'll, we're going to redo that in the spring. We're going to actually, I'm working very closely with Beth Pratt, the new Assistant Principal of Academics at the high school in Mary Marotta, Instructional Technology Specialist. Right now, forming, we want to do, we surveyed the staff at the high school because it wasn't a well-turnout staff response last year, so we're going to do that in January, and then we'll do the students again in April. But every question on the survey asks how it impacts their ability to deeper learning or flexible learning or personalized learning, how, you know, ask detailed questions about how they're using it. Be glad to share that with you.
And, and thank you.
You're welcome.
And so, but I think, so my, my daughter's, my younger daughter's now getting involved in this. Again, my, my older daughter was riding the first wave of this.
She's up.
Yeah. So, so what I'd, I know some of the things and some of the benefits, and I'd like to see that brought forward so the community can also share with that too, because I see my daughter come in with, she still carries unfortunately huge nap sack, and there was a conversation, I think on Facebook, about textbooks and all this, which I won't. But I'd like to see the community being able to view how, how homework is done, the collaboration that's involved. I know there's even, she has a group of friends that's a study group, and they, they video chat. So they, whatever it is, you know, Skype or whatever they're doing, whatever app they're using, but they're, they're communicating together, and someone's stuck on something, they're helping them out, they're like, hey, check this out, look here or there, they're studying together, and, you know, you're using Google Classroom, you're able to put things forward to the, so I think even a presentation on that, where how that works with the interaction between the teaching, the teachers, me as a parent being able to go on and, you know, they, they may say, you know, can you help me edit this, right? When you're putting something and how, how that all, that's what I'd like to see personally.
Two years ago, we did that in the first year. So when we first started the one-to-one.
Right.
We did that, we had like four educators come in with students, we could do that.
I, it's just me personally, but I just think, this is a presentation that kind of goes along with just the school committee, but it goes through the community too.
Lots of good things happening, but you want to show it, and I'll probably do that in 10 minutes.
Yeah, no, it's true, it's true. And, and I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm not fooling on your presentation either.
Does anybody else have anything they want to add? Thank you, Neil.
If I can, I'll just add one point. For this one, starting next year, all three levels, six, three to 12, we have to do the online testing. So with this one-to-one, this, this is great help for the student getting familiar with the device and practice all these online skills. That's another thing, it's, it's a mandatory, mandatory, you know, direction.
But they're not taking them home, right? The sixth graders aren't, or they are taking them home?
Sixth and seventh grade, the principals felt more comfortable with them just staying in the school building.
So, so this document, I haven't had a chance to read this because we just got it handed to us, but there's a lot of.
I gave it to him June. And.
Just for pressure.
This, this is June.
Yeah. And I know that Dr. Bates presented it as well.
With all due respect, five months, a lot of life happens. It would have been helpful for us to get this early because I think this would have been able to answer some of the questions I had in the middle of the presentation.
Sure. And there, we can certainly bring folks back, or if you want to take a look at a different type of presentation like you're describing, yeah, that's completely different than, than this type of presentation.
That's demonstration type. What Neil's looking for is a demonstration. What I was looking for was this. So I appreciate getting this, but now I'm going to go back and read it again.
And then this is the update.
Yeah.
Right.
The update is really important to read.
Okay.
And then really, Lorraine, what I want you to know is the process around decision-making is a lot more inclusive than it has been in the past. And I think that's really important, that we listen to all of our stakeholders.
Yeah, because that wasn't the way it was.
And so.
Right.
You know, I have a, we have a very good group that will meet four times during the year, but also has a pulse. Every administrative meeting that we have, technology's on the agenda every single time.
Every single, yeah, every single time.
And the principals' meetings, sometimes Succi and I are called in the principals' meeting. Must happen every other week. But I just want our educators, our staff to know that there's avenues to provide feedback, and we're listening, and we want to get back to that.
Do we have people in, and I know this is, I appreciate that, and I know what I'm going to ask is going to sound like kind of junior to what you're talking about. Do we have people in each of the buildings now dedicated to those buildings, sitting in those buildings to help the staff?
Well, yeah, the IT.
Yes, we do.
We do, okay.
The ITS people are there.
Like they are physically, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Because like I know they were like upstairs at one point, but they weren't in the building.
Totally different. It just depends on what you're asking for. But we have ITS people totally dedicated in every building.
So ITS is an instructional technology specialist who is a teacher, and IT works under Succi's team, and they do fix it. But we have an instructional technology specialist in every building, and the middle schools are now fully staffed with that, and it's made a huge difference for teachers.
Right.
And it's important in most middle schools.
The other thing I want to point out too, and I appreciate you bringing up about communication. You two communicate, like you meet every Monday morning.
Right.
Then I often, the three of us meet.
So a lot of what we're doing is in right here.
Yeah, so I mean, there is a huge amount of ongoing communication. Pat's, well, the reason Pat's in the middle there is because she's very often meeting with them.
You're always in the middle.
Well, the teachers are wearing, I mean, there's just a lot of collaboration here. Joan's very active with it all. So I mean, we're all very actively involved in this, so I appreciate that message.
All right. Any other questions for the group? Neil, Mark, I just called you Neil. Sorry, Mark. Sorry, Neil.
Just calling Bert.
Bert.
We like Bert and Boltley too.
The current people are grades that are in possession of one-to-one computers right now or this year.
Eight, nine, and 10.
Eight, nine, and 10. And so next year, we're going down two grades or?
Down two grades and up two grades. So it'll be one-to-one, hopefully, six through 12. And that really helps us as, you know, with the next generation assessments.
So we're actually taking a kind of a big bite.
Yeah.
Equipment purchase in the coming fiscal year, right? That's one of the requests that we should anticipate.
Actually, the current model is, sorry, the current model is we buy one-to-one for eighth grade only, then they go from eighth to ninth to 10. Then we also have card and classroom-based Chromebooks. So the new model we propose is we buy sixth grade and eighth grade. Then we stop upgrading the classroom and card-based old equipment. But the current old equipment, not, oh, I shouldn't say old, the current card and classroom-based Chromebooks, we have enough, they are pretty decent age-wise, only one or two years old, we have enough to get to seventh and twelfth grade. So if we go this, this model with sixth and eighth, next year instantly, from all our middle school and high school, we become truly one-to-one. And the, the cost, you wouldn't see much difference. Like I did a rough calculation, card is a, all the card and classroom-based machine, the Chromebooks, we have 250 Chromebooks. So current fifth-grade student, we have 270, 272. So there are only about like 20 difference. So if we stop upgrading the classroom and card-based, we can use all those machines, you know.
So it's really about a redistribution of the hardware.
It's like one grade level additional.
Yeah, well, and as Cindy had said earlier, and Chee as well, you know, that MCAS mandate has really helped us rethink things.
I had a question about that because I thought that last year, if, if a district couldn't prove that they had the capability to, what, what was it that got in the way of everybody taking it last year?
Well, are you thinking just that if, oh, no, it's just what, what, what the state said. The state was the one who mandated.
Right. But I thought you had to prove that you either didn't have the technology available, was it the number of?
You could ask for a waiver, but we didn't want to do that.
You could ask for a waiver, but we didn't need to.
So what I'm saying, so the district which I teach, we, everybody was online. Because it's a brand-new building, brand-new, brand-new, you know, we had access to enough technology. What, why, why didn't that happen at Nishova? Wasn't it the, the Wi-Fi wasn't up?
What, what did you think didn't happen at Nishova?
It's the expansion of the.
No, not every grade at all took it online.
Expansion.
Right, but we, we didn't, we didn't have to, it wasn't mandated.
Oh, I thought, I thought you had to prove in order for.
No, no.
What was mandated?
We, okay. I thought you had, okay.
And so we literally, and we saw this coming, so we've literally been thoughtful and phased it in with MCAS.
Okay, okay.
And the mandate for this year is the addition of grade five and grade seven.
Yep.
And then the following year, spring of 19, it'll be grade three and grade 10.
Yeah.
So that does lead me to the next question that I have. So I know in the past, we've, we've been sort of keeping up with bandwidth and so forth. Now, does that mean that you're going to have the infrastructure in place, or it's in place already to be able to deal with that? Because that's a big, big jump.
And that's inherent too. So we've been updating the switches, using the category two to get refunded at the 50% back rate. And right now, it's 100% of our classrooms have its own wireless access point. Not every area in the building, but every classroom does. And all the switches, the switches that need to be upgraded were upgraded, and we will do it again next summer.
Right, so two things on that. So are we throttling down based on usage like we were, or?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So that's been a huge problem for some people at high school when they're doing like video content and so forth, and kids having to go to their, their cell phones. I mean, we've gone through this.
You're talking about this year?
I'm talking about in the past that that's happened, and that's, that's so, and so there was, there was talk about how to, how to work around that, so we had the bandwidth to be able to not have kids, you know, have to throttle down, because then that becomes a paperweight at that point. So are we still throttling down, or are we?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Neil, for that one, I think, I really appreciate you bringing this up, but I also, I really like to get directly involved. Whoever reports this to you, I'd like to see the scenario when that happened. Because the way we manage shouldn't have any of that kind of impact at all. I showed you last time, last, last year when we discussed, the bandwidth we get for student, actually for student, for teacher, they shouldn't have that kind of issue at all. And also, we separate the personal device and also the school-owned device. There's always issue like when they come play slow, are they slow on their personal device, are they slow on their school-owned device?
Right, so do you guys do trouble tickets to figure that out?
I'm going to interrupt you for a second.
Yes.
Because this sounds like a conversation that you guys should be having, because I don't know if the rest of us are gathering this information up or if it's a separate conversation.
Yes, absolutely. I need to have, like, if you guys have this kind, you know, I can go, you know, have a separate one.
So what then, Neil? Should we bring this down to B&amp;W and have the, you know what I mean, or here?
Well, I guess what is it that you want to know because?
Well, there's a lot to this.
Well, okay.
You know, I mean, that's, that's one of the questions that I had with, you know, with the addition of additional grades and so forth, it's going to be using more bandwidth and so forth, and if we have to throttle down based on usage. I'm, and, and I'm not in the industry, but it's just, you know, want to make sure that the kids have the capabilities. And then my other question was on the, the filter that you're looking for. Is that going to be variable so that the high school is not being filtered at the same level that, let's say, kids in sixth grade are?
Well, we do that now.
Okay. That's all. I have new stuff, so thank you. That's all the stuff I'm trying to comment about.
So how many, so you guys have met, I mean, this is, I think, one of the problems. You guys have met with?
Nope, I have not. I've waited for this to come out before.
So when is your technology meeting that they're invited to?
It was November 1st.
Yeah, November 1st.
Yeah, it was on November 1st. I was sick, so I wasn't there that day.
Yeah, at least let me know she was ill.
So do you meet regularly?
So the technology committee is going to meet every other month this year because all those other things are happening in between, and all of those things that are happening are going to be driven into that technology committee with the, and as I said, it's made up. up of school building administrators, Joan, DeAngelo, so she's still behind you. Sonnet teaching, learning, sonnet. So, all that information filters up and where we can really.
Because I, I think what's, I think what's happening is you have your plan that you want us to understand and see, which we appreciate you putting that together, but I think what Neil's getting at are some of the concerns that have happened in the past, and we probably need to get some answers on those, because we do get questions. We get emails about them. Lynn's nodding her head yes, too. So, we need to figure out how to get that information, get those questions catalogued in order to get, give you folks a chance to answer those questions. But I also want to be able to share that information, because I'm a conduit to the community, and I don't necessarily understand this, so I don't think it would be B&amp;W, but I, I don't think there's, but I don't think there's, no, I'm just saying, I'm trying to figure out in my head.
Right, so, the, but with technology, we're, we're there, and, and I know that there's, there's been a request earlier in the year for us not to necessarily be so involved. These are the professionals that are handling this and so forth, from our observation, kind of going into this.
So, if you have questions that you want answers to, then detail those questions out, and then, and I'm gonna open this up to everyone, because we might as well get a comprehensive list of questions. And then, we're gonna funnel it to you, but I'm gonna ask that those questions be thoroughly answered, because then it's gonna come back to everyone. You'll certainly probably take the lead, uh, to you, right?
Mm-hmm, sure.
And then, if there needs to be a follow-up conversation, then we'll do it. Or if there's a pressing need that needs a follow-up conversation, then we'll do that, because this, this is a big-ticket item in the district budget, and it's bigger than that, it's an enabler to a different way of learning, and I think that's probably the concern, that we're, we're, we're all not really getting it. Probably that's why you mentioned earlier, I need to see a demonstration, I need to understand how this happens. Is that my idea?
It's kind of like how, how the, the back room dovetails with the front room, if you know what I'm saying. So, what forward-facing, the kids, the teachers dovetails with what you guys are doing. That's really one, I, I wanna see how that's, that's being brought together as more of a seamless thing, and, and how it's actually enhancing our educational model here in the district, rather than just being, you know, another thing and then that's act.
Yeah.
And that, and that, that's really the, that's where I'm coming from on this, but there are.
That, but I think everybody else here would like to hear that, right? So, I don't know how to structure that, so I'm just gonna take that to you, and you guys are gonna figure out how you're gonna get it to us.
I was just thinking, you know, what, I think what we'll do is we can go back and have some further discussion amongst all of us, and, and come up with some ideas. In the meantime, though, I think the questions, I think you should follow the questions through.
And maybe.
And I apologize, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to throw a hand grenade at this whole thing here.
Neil, I think that maybe if it, it may need, we may need to ask them to come back in, in order for us to understand chunks of this and come back and present. But we gotta figure, I don't, I mean.
It's fine, I, I'm, I'm amenable to anything.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I think, Neil, like, just before, you know, I'm speaking here, since I know you for like almost two, three years, I feel there's some kind of miscommunication, or like, every time I see you, like, I feel there's some kind of frustration on your side.
Absolutely, yes.
And same as me.
That would be incorrect.
One thing we are doing now is, we bring this, like, this new group, like, this, we meet like four times a year. We try to establish a streamlined communication. Like, what we hope is, what I want to say is, I don't want always be like, you know, when you come here, you feel so much pressure unanswered. But on my side, from me, I never heard that kind of question. I feel like internally.
What kind of question?
Like, all this, like, you know, people have issue about their streaming, network doesn't working.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop this. This is not, this is not appropriate for right now. I think that discussion needs to be taken offline, and I'm gonna ask you to broker a discussion, because I think Neil's got some concerns, and Suchi's probably got some concerns, and I'd ask Neil to come back and report to us on what you learned.
I would love to.
How does that work?
I'm good with that.
Okay?
Sorry, I'm not trying, I try, actually, what happened?
No, I understand, but I, but honestly, this, we've got, we've got a full agenda and we're behind, and I think that, that way, if you guys can get it to figure out what it is that needs to be articulated, and then bring it back in, that makes more sense.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so now, we're moving to old business and OPEB. So, gosh, my gosh, when was it? We had two vendors come in, trusts that manage OPEB trusts, and I asked the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee to review the documentation and come forward with a, a recommendation on what to do with the trust, and what to do with funding levels for OPEB for this current coming budget cycle, and then any thoughts about moving forward. So, Neil, I'm turning it over to you.
Sure, so we did meet, we had a conversation, and administration had some thoughts with what you'd like to bring forward. We agreed on the thoughts, and so, essentially, it was, at this point in time, we're looking at choosing for a target for this year in the budget of $100,000.
Increase.
Increase, right.
Increase from the $50,000 to $150,000 total?
No, from $50,000 to $100,000. We had $50,000 on the budget last year. We're saying we would go to $100,000 potentially this year.
Right, last year, we shot for $150.
Last year, we shot for $150, and we ended up coming back to 50.
Right. Didn't make that, we're trying to get the, we're trying to get the $100,000 in there, but we need to come up with a plan about take this forward and increase this year over year. We don't have recommendations for company to work with. I think there's still more conversation that needs to happen from that. Yeah, I mean, this is a big, this is a big nut. I mean, we need to take care of it, we need to do this. We started with, with that for recommendation. I think that another thing, I mean, we didn't talk about it, but I'll throw it out there tonight, 'cause we need to do that, and that is set up a irrevocable trust for that money that we have right now. And it's, my understanding is the school committee needs to direct the administration to, to set up the irrevocable trust. I don't know if that's something that we'd wanna.
So, so, okay, so, so we've got three things now. We've got, we've got the trust.
Right.
And then if, and frankly, I'm hoping you guys are gonna say we need to set up trust. And if not, why not? So, I think you're gonna, I think maybe what needs to happen is to have a point of view on that. If you wanna, you know, there was another vendor that you might be calling, and then take those three vendors and evaluate, trust or no trust. If it's a trust, do you have one of the vendors that you met with that you'd recommend? And then, so that's one set of discussions, right, that you would present?
Mm-hmm.
Right? And then, Steve, you all set?
Yes.
Okay, have a seat. And then, if, and then the next discussion point is, what a night. The amount that you're recommending to contribute to OPEB for the FY 18.
The contribution is what we will be discussing today.
Nineteen. So, you're saying, or so, this year, we made a $50,000, this, this current budget, god, FY 18 was $50,000, FY 19, you're recommending to be $100,000.
Right. And so, the administration, they, they went forward, and they, they pulled up a lot of regional school district information, as far as who's contributing right now to the program, how they're stepping this up, et cetera, where they are. There's the, you know, we talked about this, some of the more well-to-do districts are putting an incredible amount of money in there, and they're doing very, very well. There are some districts which are putting in token amounts of, you know, $10,000 or $15,000 there, and there are many districts not doing anything at this point in time. So, it's still very much the Wild West out there, and I think we need to get ahead of this and come up with something that's, that's thoughtful and sustainable, and that's really the key. How can we do something sustainable to reach the goal? And that's really, I think, why we kind of push some of that off, because that's a big, hard conversation to have.
Yeah, but I think it's, I, I mean, I think it makes sense, we, we, we stuck our toe in the water two years ago, and was like, okay, we're gonna put this $25,000 here, 'cause we're really not sure what's going on with our budget anyway, and then last year was like, well, okay, we'll do 50. And then now, the $100,000, I mean, makes me nervous, but it makes me nervous on both ends, right? Makes me nervous to fund it, you know, to scrape the money, especially as we're hearing about all these grants that are going away, and I forgot to ask Pat if there was any information on the E-grant, E-rate, E-rate, if that's, if that's solid right now.
I haven't heard anything.
Okay, but then on the other side, it's like, well, we don't do anything, we're kind of in a tough spot.
We're adding every year to, to, to think.
Right.
If you look at the actuarial, actuarial report, you know, I mean, it's, it's crazy, and it's, you know, just under what, about a million dollars a year that we're looking at here, so $100,000 still way short of covering what we need to be putting in.
Right.
But can we put in a million dollars a year?
No, we need to ask about that question.
I mean, so, so, but do you understand what I'm saying? So, there's, there's, there has to be something thoughtful, and this needs to be taken care of, but how? It's not, it's not a simple question unless we're really going to either expand the budget or cut into the budget to accommodate that mon, that money. And so, that's not like one little thing that just the three of us in, in the Subcommittee can come up with in a, in a couple meetings.
And for clarification purposes, I said, like, last year, you're absolutely right, you started down the road, the $150,000 is where we started last year, and then obviously had to whittle it down to $50,000. We, just for the purposes of, of, purpose of a qualifier, we're aiming for that $100,000. I don't know if we can do it or not, but that's what we're aiming for, so.
Well, we gotta make a commitment. I, I mean, we don't have to vote on this, it comes through in the budget when we go through the budget, but.
So, today, Pat brought up a great point. So, we have to, we have to also be cognizant of, you know, so, we do have bonding issues as far as, you know, we need to make sure that we're okay and not getting, you know, dinged on things for rates. Now, that being said, you've got to be giving some sort, according to the person we had in here, we have to be giving some sort of realistic money to this that's gonna show that we are trying, in fact, to solve the issue. On the flip side, if our E and D levels drop down to near nothing, that's going to affect our bond issue too, you know, our bond rating too. So, so.
So, that's what you mean.
There are so many, sort of, there are so many moving parts to this, and because we're, you know, and, and I envy the towns that have been able to, to solve this, but they started a while ago, I think, and, and, I mean, we're, we're, we've got such a nut now that.
So, let's go back to, you made the recommendation, you're targeting $100,000 for this year, and then you folk, you're gonna bring one more.
Vendor in.
Vendor in, and then Budget and Warrant, you'll do, you'll do your thing, look at, do you wanna recommend a trust, 'cause we gotta do something with that money? And then, how, what would that look like? And I think, you come forward with the recommendations.
So, we wouldn't, I don't think we're gonna recommend the trust, I think we would recommend the administration set up and go through the process of setting up the trust. The other people, the other three people that came in, they don't, they're not the trusts, they're the money managers.
They're the managers, right.
Yeah. Parr's actually is a trust.
Right, they'll do.
They were there all.
Let's leave it at this. You guys go off, come back, and recommend to the full school committee what you think we should do.
Right.
That's what, that's where we need to be, where we need to be. All right, let's move on. Well, now, Susan, policy.
Yep, so the bylaws, I apologize, were part, we put the entire Section A in the packet again, sorry, but the bylaws were there. And I tried to address all of the concerns that everybody had, and ran them by Dorothy, and she said that the changes that are here are fine. The thing, so I'll just go through on Article Two, the changes I made were Article Two, Section Three. There was some concern, and I know Lynn, you, you mentioned it earlier, there, there was some concern about our level of oversight and being more specific about what, what we were, I think it was you, Lorraine, that, that were concerned about, like, what we, what we should take responsibility for in that first Article Two, Section Three, for the business administrator and the assistant superintendent and the contracts and all that. Wasn't that you that was talking about that? So, what I, all I did was I took the MGL language and put it in there, and I didn't know if, if any, if any of that clarified your concerns, and if so, we could maybe pull from it and, and add it to that section? Does that make sense?
I'm okay with you leaving the reference in there. My whole question was.
The May needs to stay. The May and the, we can't change the May's and the shall's.
No, 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 I'm not gonna touch that. I wouldn't touch that. My only concern was the, we, we, we as a district ended up in a funky spot, because an assistant superintendent contract, I think we expected that we were supposed to have reviewed it.
Every new contract cycle is the equivalent of a new hiring. The school committee should approve the contract. Additionally, the school committee should be made aware of anything in a contract that is, is extraordinary and has budget impact, and none of that happened, seriously.
So, you're okay with just having the reference there? You don't wanna take anything out of that?
I don't wanna take it out, I wanna, I wanna.
No, anything out of that quote that would make that more clear.
You, I think you could leave that in there, because no one's gotta go look it up.
Okay, oh, that's a lot.
I, I think that's, I think that's helpful for people.
Include it, okay.
Don't you guys?
I think so, too.
Okay, so add that in.
Say again what section that is.
Wait a second, that's Article Two, Section Three?
Right. So, you said the May and the shall's have to stay.
Yes.
So, if it's a May, it's not a, a will. The school committee will award a contract to the superintendent of schools.
Because, I, well, yes, okay, I was looking at Section Three, but yeah, okay.
This is, I think this is what I recall us having a disagreement about.
You're on Section Two, right?
Section Two, Section Three I'm looking at.
Okay.
All right.
The business administrator.
Article Two, yes, I know it's MGL, but where we ran into a problem previously is with May, the superintendent awarded the contract to the assistant superintendent without, unbeknownst to the school committee. So, when you say that we may award it to a school business administrator, it, when you say may, it's not necessarily so.
But what this section of the article is, is, is trying, is making, is trying to make clear is that, Dorothy explained it, that not every school, not every district hires a business administrator. Some may share it with the town.
No, understandably.
But we do.
Right, so, so that, all that's saying is that, yes, we may have one or we may not. It's not necessarily.
But the way that I interpreted, the way you say it makes it clear.
Yeah.
If you have one, then you may.
Yeah, so I can add that, yeah, sure. If the district employs its own.
I just don't ever wanna see this district in that position again.[1703.32] I just don't ever wanna see this district in that position again.
That's exactly the point. Is if there is one, then yes, the school committee should...
Shall.
Okay, okay, moving on.
So would it satisfy everybody's concerns to add a phrase which makes that clear?
I think Susan's got it.
In the case that there is a contract?
I think that was the point, yeah, thank you.
We still have to keep the May, though.
Right.
So I'll add one that says, if we have, if we have one, we shall award a contract.
Yes, that's good.
But they may or may not actually award one.
Well, it's, well, I mean, it's similar to the business managers, so the superintendent makes the recommendation, but the, but the hire doesn't happen and the school committee doesn't approve.
Just a thought, I would connect with Dorothy on that and explain, you explain this, this understanding?
Yep, yep.
The other thing...
And she thought that adding this language from MGL would be, would be...
Would suffice.
Yeah. But I can go back to her, and I'm sure she would have no trouble with us adding, we just can't change it there.
Is she aware of the problem, so she'll know?
Yes, no, right, yep.
But the other thing is, we do have a policy that wasn't filed previously saying that the school committee sets salary levels.
Yeah.
And included in that, it's not just the salary, and maybe that's something we could include in the policy that...
It could have lots of policies, but if they're not followed, that...
Well, that's it, but not just the salary, but the benefits that have a monetary, you have a term for it.
The compensation?
Compensation package.
Well, it's kind of a...
That might be the safety net for this. And the problem was, it was never followed.
Okay, so you know what you're doing.
Well, I think I do, I'm adding, I'm adding a shall to, okay, all right.
Is there anything else in here, Susan, we need to be made aware?
Yeah.
Run quickly.
Well, I mean, these are all changes that you guys wanted. So Article Six, Section One, we can't appoint the business manager as treasurer. So I just crossed all that out and said to hire a treasurer, and then added, do you see what I added?
Mm-hmm. I did, and I read through all this, and I thought it was, there was one, it, okay, Susan, in that one, Article Six, Section One, one, two, three, four, and it's a nit, but whatever. The fifth line, after committee comma, it is the responsibility?
Give us the word is.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, no.
That's all, just a little mini thing.
But that says what you wanted?
Yeah, I think it's good, yeah.
And then, I just, I ran it by Alita, Article Seven, Section Two.
Yep.
You just prepare the correct record and post them. Then I didn't know if we needed the safeguarding minutes. Do you wanna keep that in C? If they're posted online, are they safeguarded? Is that a...
Don't we want paper record anyhow until now that it's well organized?
No, there's no paper record, we're not keeping it.
We're not keeping paper records with them?
No, it's online.
So there's no archive?
A lot of it's...
It's an online archive.
Yeah, online archive. So do we need C?
It's gone, no.
Well, we do have executive session stuff that's never online, so where's that kept?
Executive session minutes are approved.
But they're not online.
No.
They're kept electronically.
Yeah. They're not accessible unless somebody wants them, is that, is your point? What's, what's the, what's the...
Well, my concern is, we all know electronic things are, can be troublesome, and it's nice to have a permanent archive. And so I'm just a little concerned about, maybe we've abandoned this for years now and haven't known it.
You should see my home office because I have stacks of paper because I'm addicted to it. But I, but I think we're good with the electronic stuff, so I'm with you on that personally, but...
The only other thing was Neil, you, Article Twenty-Three, Section Two. You wanted me to strike or set subcommittee, and I did, and that's that. I think I got everybody.
Awesome.
Okay.
Susan, I can't believe how much patience you have.
No, no, I don't know, maybe I'm not a very careful listener.
I was gonna ask you what grade you taught, is it seventh grade? Wow!
For Article Twenty-Three, Section Two, I will vote down this change because I disagree with it. And it doesn't change the fact that any school committee member can make a public records request. So you may as well make it through the Subcommittee chairs, you know?
Article Twenty-Three...
Wait, which one?
Section Two.
Oh, the Subcommittee thing.
Right.
Okay, so we get a little bit...
Yeah. So I'm perhaps the lone ranger on this. I think you should let your Subcommittees ask for information. If you don't, your individual school committees are gonna start, members are gonna start asking for information.
Hang on, I'm not, I'm not there yet. It's slowing me down these pages a little.
So Section Twenty-Three, Article Twenty-Three, which section were?
It's Page Eleven of Twelve, Section Two.
Last three words of previous...
Or said Subcommittee?
Right.
I thought, yeah, I mean, we didn't vote last time, but I, or it was October eleventh, so it's a while back.
You don't wanna tell the chair that you're looking for information?
My, so, so Neil was saying...
My point of view, which I announced previously, is that you should let the Subcommittee's ask for stuff, that's all.
All right, I'm lost here, and maybe...
It was, it was about going through the chair to get to the superintendent and the staff.
That's right.
And so we, I thought we decided altogether whether or not we, there was no dissent, I guess, on that, in October.
Oh, honey, outside John Hartline, we'll cancel each other out.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
I'm just saying that's where I stand on that.
I think that, that, that...
Protocol.
It's part of our protocol. It says bylaws, yes.
Well, that eliminates five people asking for the same thing.
Well, this is what's created the problems in the past. All right, so...
I'm just saying, it's not gonna stop school committee members asking for stuff. Because they can just make a public records request if they feel...
If your school committee member makes a public records request, and that's what they wanna do, it's extremely telling, and that's what you go ahead and do.
So I think, you know, let your Subcommittee's ask for stuff.
Through the chair.
Through the chair.
But let's stop them from going to the chair, why wouldn't you go to the chair?
My point of view is that it slows down the conversation that if you have to wait two weeks or more...
By going to the chair?
No, so the way that, so the way I've been handling it, for instance, for being W is if there's a request that I'm making, what I do is I make the request in writing to Brooke, but I CC Lorraine.
Yeah.
So that Lorraine's in on the loop with that. And then if she's got some sort of feedback about that and says, eh, you know, I don't like that, or whatever, then she's, you know, gonna get that feedback, or, you know, whatever, but she's, she's in the loop on the thing. So I'm not out there doing things on our behalf that no one else in the school committee knows.
Or vice versa.
That's where my thought process was behind being that.
Okay, any other conversation on the, but thank you for this work.
No, it's just, so I'll make these changes, and we can't, we can't vote till, till I come to you with something you say is perfect. And then we can vote the next time.
Right.
So hopefully that'll happen before...
All right.
You've done a great work with this, Susan, just great.
I just typed...
Thank you for everything that you've done, this is huge. Yeah, it is. Intermural sports, and we're almost there.
You know what, sure, and this is just gonna be, just a quick, I don't think we are gonna even, even ten minutes. Tanya and I had some really rich discussion on this after our last meeting. And I, I think that I, well, I know I speak for her as well as myself when I say that. I really, and she really disagrees with the notion of introducing any type of pay-for-play for intermural sports. For a lot of kids, it's the only place they will get sports. And I just think that it's really going to disadvantage children. And it really frees market deer thinking you vote, you know, we should, just shouldn't be charging. So I'm putting out there right now that I do not agree with charging any type of fee for intermural sports.
I'm good with that. You guys, how do you feel?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right, Subcommittee reports, Budget and Warrant.
Yeah, so we pretty much did it already.
Thank you. Moving on.
It was a great discussion, it was a great meeting.
Yes.
Kathy, personnel.
We met on the thirteenth of November, focused on staffing that is going to be put forth in the upcoming budget. So we'll fill this in on some of the issues that she's brought up with the rest of the staff.
Okay.
Then, Elise?
Yes, I'm just checking my calendar because I wanted to tell everybody when the next CPAC meeting is because I think it's February. February? Possibly, there's not one in December, but we just had a meeting November sixteenth where we got to hear about the, from two of the math teachers, math and special ed teacher, that are co-teaching. And they told us about our program.
It's very exciting.
It was very fun to hear about.
Yeah.
Very, very quickly, they're the senior implementation. At this point, there are, there's now a co-taught class in each of the grades six, seven, and eight. So there's no more pull-out model of their pull-in inclusion.
Question.
At this point, not all students are in a co-taught class, but there is a co-taught class in every grade. And they're moving this model into the other middle schools. The goal is also to move into co-taught English, Spanish, Arts. The teachers that presented on it were so, had so much good to say, and so many, you know, insights and things about how it's working and what models work best with which content and which students. And they're starting to share that out with other teachers and collaborating, doing PD with each other. So it was really good to hear about. And I had the, the calendar from Isabel Wells, that's what I was pulling up on my phone... To see, but I think the next meeting will not be at this point until January eighteenth is the next meeting at seven o'clock, and that will be in the high school. So people should make sure they go because it's lots of fun to get to hear about in-depth all the programs that are happening.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, any correspondence of no? Have everyone's reviewed the meeting minutes of November eighth, twenty seventeen? Warrants of November twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen? We'll assume those are all set. Items for next meeting, okay. Next meeting, we're gonna take a look at the preliminary budget that Pass is gonna bring forward. We also have a UMass presentation on vaping and juuling, which I think we should really encourage everybody to listen to. We will be bringing forward, hopefully, maybe, the Unit A contract.
We will be.
And I think that's it, and that's, that's pretty much it. So I think with that, we are good to go. And we are gonna go into executive session, but we will not be returning to open session because it would have an impact, negative impact on the district, so... Would someone please do that?
I move that we do a regular meeting and enter into an executive session to review and discuss draft executive session minutes up to November eighth, twenty seventeen as an open meeting, may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the body and the chair serves the players.
Thank you. Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Kathy, you want to roll call?
Um, Lorraine?
Yeah.
Elise? Yes. Steve?
Yes.
Lynn?
The affirmation system.
Mark?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. Neil?
Yes.
Not mechanicals, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep you...
Good, thank you.
He's gonna ask you.